One minute. Thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven.
Good morning. Want to welcome you to the Sedgwick County Board of Accounting Commission meeting. Those that are joining us online, on social media, via YouTube, Facebook, also our television partners, KPTS. Want to welcome you. And those that are here in person today, we're glad that you're joining us. As you walked in, you could have had opportunity to grab a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to grab that so you can follow along with the things that we're discussing today. And if you're curious of some of the supporting documents that we have access to as we make decisions on each of these items, you can always find all of that information at sedgwickcounty.org. A couple thoughts before we head into today's meeting. It will be a long meeting today, it seems. We've got a lot of good items to discuss and a lot of public comment that we're going to be inviting. There is an item on our agenda today. It is item E regarding a zoning code discussion on solar, industrial solar. We are, there are a lot of people that have signed up for the public comment section. We're going to open up a public hearing during that item. So while we call for public comment, if you'd like to discuss on the solar topic, you can wait until that line item comes in the agenda and we'll call for it separately. So just want to make sure everybody's aware that when we call public comment, if you want to discuss on the solar item and the zoning code, then you can wait until that line item and we can open up public comment at that point in time. Also, because of the length of, the expected length of the meeting today, I will be making some adjustments to these items. Off the top of my head, I'm going to move item F to our first item of new business. That is so our district attorney can get back to business. So we'll get to that here shortly, Mark. But we're going to have a good meeting today. I'll officially call the meeting to order for August 7, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Ron Proct. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
You pray with me, please. Father, we come before you this morning on behalf of the Board of Commissioners as they carry out their responsibilities of providing services needed by the people of our county. We ask for wisdom as they make decisions that will touch the lives of every citizen of Sedgwick County. Direct their thoughts and comments to the greater good of the people they are elected to serve. Father, we live in a time of great political, religious, and social chaos that often becomes a source of anger and frustration among the citizens of our nation. We ask you to speak peace into your world and teach us to treat one another as people who carry the Imago Dei, the image of our Creator. To treat one another as fellow citizens of our community. Teach us to respond with respect and dignity toward those with whom we disagree. Help our Commissioners to model that character in their reactions and responses to one another and to the citizens who speak to them today. We pray for unity even in the diversity of opinions held by our Commissioners and those whom they will address this morning. Father, in the midst of this high political drama, Democrats, Republicans, and independents are asking us to vote for them so they can fix the problems of our society. Father, give us wisdom to listen to your voice and not the voices that scream at us from the television, radio, fill our mailboxes and inboxes with charges and countercharges and half-truths. Give us clarity to see through the smoke and make decisions about where we place our vote. Help us to speak words that heal and encourage rather than belittle and put down those who disagree with us. Protect us from turning on one another in the heat of this political season. This morning, Father, we hold up the family of firefighter who lost his life serving others this past week. Help us as a community to know how to love and serve them. May your peace and comfort overwhelm them through the hands and feet of our community. May Tyvo's family know that they are not alone in these difficult days. Comfort and strengthen them as they begin this new and painful chapter in life. We pray for the first responders, police, firefighters, and EMS as they go out day after day to serve our community. Protect them, we pray, as they serve us by rushing toward danger rather than away from it. We also bring before you our concern for those in our community who are the most vulnerable in days of great heat. Protect the elderly, the homeless, and those who live on low and fixed incomes. Show us how to lovingly serve them and show them your compassion in these dark days. This morning, Father, we pray specifically for the Board of Commissioners as they tackle the issues before them. Give them wisdom and courage. Give them strength to respond with dignity toward those who would verbally attack them. Give those who speak before this commission this morning wisdom to speak words of encouragement even when that goes against the grain of other voices. Father, help us as a community to love, respect, and treat with dignity those around us, especially for those with whom we disagree. Cause our words to heal and encourage rather than tear down and destroy. And we ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Ron, thank you, sir. Appreciate your encouragement. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners. It is back to school time and Sedgwick County Health Department has teamed up with Wichita Public Schools to offer free vaccinations for students from all area school districts. The clinics will be on Saturdays, August 17th and 24th, from 8:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Alvin E. Morris Administrative Center at 903 South Edgemore. Appointments are required, so please call ahead to schedule. The number's there on the screen. It is 316-973-4475. And there is still time for citizens to give feedback on the 2025 recommended budget. The entire document is posted on our Sedgwick County website on the finance page with a big banner. Can't miss it. We also have an online public forum available for your comments. You can also attend a budget hearing on Wednesday, August 21st at 9:00 a.m. right here in this auditorium. And Commissioners really do want to hear from you before they take action on the budget at that meeting. Finally, in county good news, we've had several employees recently featured by CakeTV as hometown heroes, defined as veterans, law enforcement, firefighters, or medical workers who exhibit selfless leadership, bravery, and unconditional dedication to the community. And as part of this honor, CakeTV shares their story on the news and at a Wind Surge baseball game where they're featured on the big screen and given a special commemorative jersey. And as you can see here, Julie Stimson was named a hometown hero in June for her work as our Director of Emergency Management and as an Air Force veteran. Congratulations to her. Then in July, we had a sheriff's lieutenant also named a hometown hero. You may recognize him. He's won other awards. Lieutenant Clayton Barth works as a Sedgwick County detention lieutenant, but he was actually at his other job when he saved a man's life. This news story explains what happened.
It was on this day.
So let me open up with a little bit of supernatural that's going on. We've had some attacks this morning.
That Clayton Barth preached for the last time.
I'm going to rebuke the enemy right here, right now.
He was a pastor at Douglas Avenue Assembly of God in Wichita for about six years.
And we're having a potluck that day. They were bringing in all different foods and stuff like that. About five, 10 minutes before service would start. I usually excuse myself to go get ready for the sermon and everything, and I go pray with our senior pastor.
And just before he took to the podium to wrap up his pastorship on December 31st of last year.
I hear him call my name, Clayton, and it was pretty loud. And so you could hear the kind of the panic. And so I was like, okay, yeah, what's going on? And he's like, hey, Marvin, stop breathing. They were in prayer. And Marvin was starting to slowly just kind of like falling asleep, but then, you know, just kind of his heart was starting to slow down. Everything was slowing down for him. He overexerted himself. Captain Ramsey picks him up. I take the chair underneath. We lay him down on the ground. And we start searching for pulse.
Chest compressions then started, and all to help save a church member's life.
And then I do another one. And that's when he, you could tell him he kind of jolted up, not jolted, but just kind of woke up enough and grabbed a hold of actually Captain Ramsey's hand. And that's where he started coming back.
From there, going forward and preaching his last Sunday sermon.
And his wife actually messaged me and Captain Ramsey and said, you know, if it wasn't for you guys, he would be dead.
Up until that point, once a week, he was known as Pastor Barth. But at the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, he's Lieutenant Barth, and he oversees a lot.
Oversee our clinic. I oversee our chaplain's office, oversee our kitchen, oversee our detention clerical, oversee our MA Coordinator's office, oversee our disciplinary detention.
On that Sunday, he says it was nothing but divine.
I will give the glory to God. Never know when your ticket's going to be punched. And, you know, that's, that's a real good reason why to always be right with, right with God.
In Wichita, Hennequin Cake News on your side.
And before I bring him forward, I want to show you the man that he saved. Marvin Thompson could not be here today. He really wanted to come, but he shared this photo of his wife and daughter because he says he now gets to spend more time with them thanks to Lieutenant Barth. So let's hear it for our hometown hero and bring him to the podium.
Welcome, Lieutenant.
Aye. Hello.
Well, we were waiting for you to give us a big speech.
Speech, okay. No, it was a, it was definitely a, one of those moments. It was actually my last sermon that Sunday. I resigned, you know, in good terms, but I just, it was just time. And it was the last Sunday. And of course, I heard the, the sound come out and ran over there and ministers CPR and then walked right on stage to do a sermon. So it was, it was definitely a very, very interesting and very, you know, weird Sunday. But it was, it was one of those moments that definitely defines a lifetime. So.
Certainly. Well, Lieutenant, thank you so much. Your, your, your presence is everywhere in the sheriff's office. I mean, you do a lot. And we see you at graduation ceremonies. We see you out in the community. And this is a story that is incredibly moving. So we know how much you care about people. And we're grateful for your position that you're in, that you have this worldview, that people really do matter, and the way you go about your business. We are grateful for you. Congratulations. You are a hometown hero.
Thank you.
To a lot of people. Couple questions and comments. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Lieutenant, thank you very much for being here. We have a lot of hometown heroes here in Sedgwick County. You're one of them, and we're very proud of you. And we're proud of all of the people that wear the uniform here and our first responders. I do want to take this opportunity to also to recognize other hometown heroes that we have. Today is a unique day, and it's Purple Heart Day for all of the men and women who are, you don't earn the Purple Heart, that received the Purple Heart. If you walked in their room today, you'll see that there's a flag in the back of the room. We're a Purple Heart County. So I just wanted to pass that on to you, that you represent a lot of heroes that we have here in Sedgwick County. We appreciate that very much. And we appreciate all the sacrifices of the men and women that wear the uniform, no matter which uniform it is. Thank you.
Very good. Lieutenant, thank you again. And congratulations to Julie Stimson, another hometown hero. She is absolutely amazing as well. So thank you. We want to celebrate you today. Appreciate all the work you do.
And I actually want to say thank you to you guys for what you do for the, not only the citizens, but us that work in Sedgwick County. You know, the things that you have done here and, and our raises and that has been a huge blessing to not only just individually to me as my family, but to others that have worked for me and around me and above me. So I just want to say thank you to you all that do what you do. You make us do what we need to do. So I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And I will be sharing more hometown hero stories in the coming weeks. So as they say in TV, stay tuned. That's all I have for today, though. Any questions?
Very good, Stephanie. Any questions or comments? Saying none. Thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay. I believe that I believe that all people that have signed up for public comment are doing so under the item, item E. Is there anyone else that maybe I might be missing to sign up for public comment that was wanting to speak on anything outside of? Yes, sir. Sorry, Faith, I didn't see you on that. Faith Martin. If you can just give your name and address for the record, and we'll have five minutes for comment.
My name is Faith Martin. I live at 608 South Drury in Wichita in District Five. And I try to review the agenda before every meeting just to see if there's anything on there that's interesting. And I was a little concerned about an item on the consent agenda, but I'm hoping there's a motion to have that pulled to discuss, and it's the Second Amendment to the lease agreement on the Bruffin Building. I don't know if people are aware, but the new agreement has two years of it that are going to be covered by property tax and only one year covered by ARPA funding. And as we talk about the budget, and we talk about places we're going to lean, and we talk about those things, I'm just concerned that $870,000-ish a year for two years will be coming out of property taxes. And I'd just like to hear the council kind of discuss where we are in a building, what that looks like, renting buildings somewhere else, or what's kind of happening. So that was just a concern of mine as we're looking to lean down on the budget. That could be something that could be discussed. And then I'll just reserve, I don't have any other feedback unless something comes up later that I want to.
Okay, very good. For reference, Faith is talking about item Q on the consent agenda that is being pulled for discussion today. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say thank you for coming down and, cab board meeting, we did discuss this a little bit. I did email the manager and the chairman, and that is the plan today to pull Q, that item off for a briefing and discussion and before we vote on that. So thank you for.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone else that has signed up in public comment that is wanting to speak off of any other topic other than solar. If I'm wrong, please raise your hand. I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, very good. I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And just as a reminder, when we get to item E, we will open it up for a public hearing. Okay, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of July 17th, 2024.
Okay, we'll take these items separately, A and B. So I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 17, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Point of reference, I was absent on item, item B. I was not available for that meeting, so.
We'll take them separate, but I think this is just item A, correct?
This is item A. Oh, okay. Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Item B, regular meeting minutes of July 24th, 2024.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 24th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
I will pass on that.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring National Health Center Week.
Okay. It's an honor to read this proclamation, declaring National Health Center Week. It's a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas more than 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. And whereas, as the country's largest primary care network, community health centers are the healthcare home for 31.5 million Americans in nearly 15,000 communities across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. And whereas, every day, community health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to provide comprehensive care allowing each community member to thrive. Health centers have more than doubled their behavioral health workforce in the last decade to meet Americans' growing need for behavioral health services. And whereas, the community health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving health outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. And whereas, during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize August 4th through the 10th, 2024, as National Health Center Week, and we acknowledge Hunter Health, Grace Med, and Health Core as the three federally qualified health centers in Sedgwick County. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move to approve as read.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to receive this proclamation is three individuals. Dr. Julie Elder, the CEO of Grace Med, Amy Famer from the CEO of Hunter Health, and Teresa Lovelady, the CEO of Health Core. Come down and.
We're so glad you guys are here today.
Good morning. On behalf of the federally qualified health centers, I did want to thank the Sedgwick County Commission for this proclamation recognizing National Health Center Week. Since the nation's first community health center opened in 1965, community health centers have understood that where we live, work, worship, and play have impacted our health on a daily basis. With roots in the civil rights movement, the visionaries who founded the earliest community health centers believe that we could fight poverty and empower communities with health and opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. Here in Wichita, we have Health Core, Hunter Health, and Grace Med, and I also want to acknowledge Guadalupe and Mayflower Clinics. Even though they're not community health centers, they are also part of that safety net. But we help to increase access to crucial primary care. No matter if you have insurance, if you're underinsured, if you have an insurance card and you can't afford the copay on that card, we're here to make certain we take care of individuals in our community. And in Sedgwick County, last year, we served over 80,000 individuals at community health centers. So annually, in our clinics, we have comprehensive services from dental, behavioral health, you talked about that, including substance abuse services, and vision and pharmacy services. And no one's turned away from any of the services provided by the community health centers regardless of their ability to pay. So with the other 1,400 community health centers across the nation, we're very honored to serve our respective communities.
And this year, the theme of National Health Center Week is powering communities through caring connections. Community health centers in every state, U.S. territory, and in the District of Columbia serve as beacons of strength, service, and care in our communities by serving all patients regardless of their abilities to pay. As we celebrate our employees, our board members, and our supporters, we want to extend a heartfelt thank you and appreciation to the County Commission for their recognition and support of the significant contributions we as community health centers have made here in Wichita. So thank you.
Very good. Okay. Questions or comments? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, guys, so much for being here this morning. My background is in health. That's what I did before I came here, so I can't tell you how much I appreciate the work that you do for so many people in our community. Health Core, in particular, I serve on their board and have served on their board for many years. And so I'm going to just brag a little bit on some of the things that I know they do, but I'm sure you all do the same thing. So I appreciate it. But Health Core was originally started because we were looking at the high infant mortality rate in the northeast area. And so that has really evolved into what it is today. And any person can walk in, have an appointment, see for physical health, and while you're there, ask about your mental health, and you could see somebody at the same time. Maybe you have something, a dental problem. Well, let's take you up to the dentist. We can fill your prescription there, and we can make sure you have everything you need and really wrap those services around individuals, which is just an incredible thing to know that happens because transportation is hard for a lot of people. At Health Core, they also have legal assistance. They have a food bank. If someone can't get to their appointment, they will send an Uber to pick them up. So just incredible work that our FQHCs do in the community, and I am so grateful for all of you and for everything that you do. Thank you.
Again, two quick things. Number one, I just want to extend what Commissioner Lopez just said, just a profound thank you, because you've expanded the core of what you do and your core services, particularly into behavioral health. And I know that it takes a lot of pressure off of some of the other organizations in this community, particularly Calm Care. It's one of the Sedgwick County, our certified community behavioral health center. It takes off so much pressure, and the partnership that you guys have is key to serving people, particularly vulnerable people in this community. And secondly, I want to just publicly thank you and all your staff at Grace Med, Hunter Health, and Health Core for the work you did at the 29th and Grove contamination site in treating individuals that were very concerned in doing the testing. Some in our community know, but not all, that when we orchestrated a plan to get people tested to make sure that they didn't have any residual effects from the contamination issue, it was your three clinics that took all of that burden in regards to the workload. So you, thank you, a profound thank you for my district and District Four, but for the people of this community, because you shouldered that, and you still are, and you're still at the table because this conversation is ongoing. So I just want you to know how much I deeply appreciate that you've stepped to the plate to serve the people in the 29th and Grove corridor area. Thank you so much. We want to celebrate this proclamation with you. If you'll give us five minutes, we're going to walk out into the hall and get a picture on the steps, so it'll be a nice picture, and you're not tripping over wires here in front. So give us five minutes. Please stay on your best behavior. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Back to work we go. Madam Clerk, will you please call item F?
New business, item F, addition of a part-time position to the district attorney staffing table.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Mark Bennett.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I wanted to come down and talk briefly about this. I know you've got a lot of other things, so I'll make this quick. In the middle of a budget season for me to ask, add or ask the commission to add somebody to the permanent staffing table, I wanted to give you a quick explanation as to why. This is somebody who has, who worked for us for about over 30 years. And after she retired, we've had her coming back a little bit, about eight to 10 hours every pay period, so very little. But her institutional experience is helping us with our records management transition to the new RMS. This is in keeping with my overall effort to try to be as efficient as possible. Some of you remember a couple of years ago that the city of Wichita was named a PSP location with the federal government. And as a part of that, there was a grant that was given to my office, didn't cost county anything. And I had somebody come in from Manhattan, New York, a couple of folks who review prosecutors' offices around the country, try to help us figure out ways to be more efficient. And the, I appreciated the results of the examination, but their recommendations were file fewer cases, hire more lawyers, neither of which are really something I can simply control. But the other option they suggested was see if you can't find people who, you know, used to work for you, who've retired, former prosecutors, former staff, et cetera, and see if you could reach out and get some of them to work part-time. There's no benefits in terms of costing the county, you know, contributing towards capers and healthcare, that sort of thing. But you do get to bring the experience back. And so we've made a concerted effort to do that. I've got three or four people now on the part-time staffing. And so this was one more of those. We were going to simply extend it, but I understand under county policy, we can do it twice and by the third time I have to come up here. So that is a very truncated version of why I'm doing this, but I thought in the middle of a budget season for me to ask for something that wasn't on the budget, you deserve an explanation and I can answer any of the questions. But giving, being aware of the number of folks here, this is a pretty mundane little line item when there's a lot of bigger things going on, but I wanted to be here to answer questions if you had any.
Well, Mr. Bennett, thank you, sir. We've all been briefed on this and for the public to understand, it's a part-time employee that's been with you for a significant number of years. And the salary and the labor and taxes is $32,164. There is sufficient budget authority in 2024 and 25 for this position. There's no additional budget authority being requested. So this is something, and from my view, making sure that our elected district attorney has the resources he has to be able to do his job is something that I'll be in favor of. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Mark, thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate it. I will support this when it becomes a motion. But one of the things that I didn't mention last week when the public came to talk to us about things that they wanted us to add back into the budget was the fact that one of the things that's not in our budget is $6.1 million worth of requests from our staff that said that they, these are items that are needed for them to be able to do their job well. We heard a lot of things about how that we shouldn't cut anything last week. And fact is, we're $5 million right now with a structural imbalance. So I just wanted to clarify something that probably didn't come up well last week was that not only are we $5 million with a structural imbalance, we also denied $6.1 million worth of requests from our staff to do their job. So it's difficult when someone comes up and asks for something else at this time, but we understand the need and I will vote for it. But I just wanted to clarify that something that didn't come up last week that probably should have to let them know how hard that we're working trying to balance this budget. Thank you.
Sure. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will move to approve the addition of a part-time position to the district attorney staffing table.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call item D.
Item D, land donation agreement for the South Central Mental Health Hospital.
Good morning, Ms. Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I am here this morning to present a milestone in our accomplishment to get to a mental health hospital. Before I begin, I do want to make some introductions as to who is here as part of this presentation. Scott Bruner, who is the Deputy Secretary for Kansas Aging Disability Services, is on Zoom. And so he is here as part of this presentation. And then I do want to also acknowledge Kirk Sponsel with the County Counselor's Office and Andrew Dilz with Facilities, who has been part of getting this accomplished this morning. And then also want to recognize Rachel Lang Mills, who is here with the Lang Community Foundation and who is presenting this land donation for the mental health hospital. Okay, so before I kind of get into the land donation agreement, I just want to back up a little bit and talk a little bit about the background of how we got here too today. So back in October of 25, 2023, we started out with a request for proposal for land and buildings. And we asked for that to be submitted to the county November 30th of 2023. And we were asking for two options, and that was land and building. And for the land, we asked that the land be within the limits of Sedgwick County and that utilities be in close proximity. Land was to be close to highway access and to be seven to 11 acres and that it be able to be changed to the appropriate zoning. For building, we asked it again, be within the limits of Sedgwick County, to be moved and ready or able to be remodeled and that the building be close to highway access. Building was to be 75 to 112,000 square feet plus and that again, be able to be changed to appropriate zoning. What we received on that deadline was 14 total proposals. Three were received on buildings and 11 were received on land. We had two phases of evaluation criteria. The first phase on the land submittals and on the building submittal had the same components. And if I can just go through that quickly. For the components of land and buildings, they shared the same, which was the ability to meet or exceed all requests for proposal conditions and instructions as outlined herein, that being in the proposal. The capacity to deliver the property in the required time, proximity to highway, road access and utilities, capability with neighboring area and market analysis comparing current listings to recently sold listings of similar criteria. What was an addition to the building was that it included ease of access throughout the facility, single story or multi-story, age of existing infrastructure and condition of building and the floor plan alignment. And this was evaluated with a review panel that included Sedgwick County and Kdad staff and also Kdad's architectural on, an on-call team and then Sedgwick County purchasing staff. So as we went through that first phase of the criteria, we shortlisted three proposals that were on the buildings and, excuse me, let me back up here a little bit. We shortlisted four, one being on a building and three on properties. The building being 2622 West Central and that also included 723 North McLean Boulevard, otherwise known as the Riverside Hospital. And then three properties that were shortlisted was 53rd and Greenwich, that included 12.93 acres, 85th and one at I-135, which included seven to 11 acres and MacArthur and Meridian, the property that we are talking about today. And that was up to 11 acres. So we went through a second phase of the evaluation criteria, which included two components, that being the overall cost with purchasing property and estimated construction and best solution for community staffing and patient needs. So that brings us to the property that we are talking about today at MacArthur and Meridian. I include this map because what was submitted in the proposal was originally this northwest parcel. However, during discussions, we asked if they would be open to the southwest portion, which is this portion here, and they were. And so what we're talking about today is this southwest portion of the larger parcel that's owned by Lang. And so this is north of MacArthur and west of Meridian. Okay, so just to give you a timeline, the shortlisted sites were assessed through the Phase Two evaluation criteria after town hall and surveys, site reviews and internal discussions. The MacArthur and Meridian shortlisted property was the overall recommendation of the evaluation review panel. Additionally, the South Central Regional Psychiatric Hospital Advisory Panel gave recommendations for consideration to the governor's office on the shortlisted site, which included the MacArthur and Meridian location. As you recall, on January 26th of this year, the county commission approved Sedgwick County staff to move forward with negotiations and discussion with the Lang Community Foundation regarding their request for proposal and their submission of donated property of up to 11 acres at MacArthur and Meridian. On February 19th, we received approval from the governor's office to proceed with design for the full 104 beds to be done with construction in two phases. So that construction would start out with the 50 beds and then later we would fill in the other 50 beds with construction. Later, a month later, on March 28th, we received approval from the governor to move forward to build the full 104-bed design. May 14th, we received zoning approval from the Wichita City Council for the mental health hospital. Two days later, the governor and the state legislature approved an additional $26.5 million of state general funds to expand to the 104 beds. So total funding to date is $107 million for the state mental health hospital. And then to date, the county has performed environmental geotech and property, and a property survey of the property that we're discussing, the MacArthur and Meridian property. And so just to give you an idea of what we're talking about on this property, I've got two maps here. I just want to point out with my mouse here where the boundaries are. So on the left here, this first line here, that's our property line here of what would be the state mental health property. And then this map here on the right, I just feel like this is just a better visual with the color. Again, this first line here is our property line. And then this Reserve B here is the retention pond area. This is just another map. This is a site plan of what the mental health hospital will look like on that property. This is, this is the Reserve B1 for the retention pond area. And then of course, this is the hospital. And then this here, this shows the three access points off of MacArthur. So this first access point here would be the, this is the Custer Road. This would be the acute patient drop-off area. The middle here, then off of MacArthur would be the employee and visitor drop-off. And then this here would be the forensic patient drop-off and for service deliveries. Okay, I'm going to get into the land donation agreement. So this is a donation of 11.72 acres valued at $1,424,359 by the Lang Community Foundation. We would close on or before August 31st of 2024. There is some funds that would be involved in this. However, just I want to point out very clearly that the state will be paying for this through state general funds as a pass-through through Sedgwick County. $40,105 of this will go to Reese Nichols, who is the county designated agent. We will pay all closing costs on this and then we will deposit $180,680 into an escrow account. And I'm going to get into some details here on that in just a second. And then 1.4 million is estimated to be paid in special assessments over 15 years and the state will be paying that through their operating funding. And that is for the access road, sidewalks, retention ponds, utilities, water distribution, sewer and stormwater. Okay, so the next three slides, I'm going to go over some pretty heavy details on the agreement terms. This particular slide is explaining the escrow account. And there's a lot of words on here. I don't typically do that, but I do want to just be very clear on the agreement terms. So in regards to the special assessments, the city of Wichita waived the letter of credit requirement for infrastructure development and built out on Phase One, which is our property and the Reserve B1, which I explained, which is our retention pond. If the purpose, which is the regional mental health hospital, is not fulfilled, the waiver would no longer then be effective. In that case, if the city later requires the letter of credit or security from Lang, the county shall pay Lang liquidated damages of up to $180,680 as compensation for the cost and damages to Lang related to the special assessments and required letter of credit to the extent that Lang provides proof of associated costs or liability incurred. In the event that construction is completed, if, if the mental health hospital is completed, the $180,680 would then be applied or could be applied to the applicable special assessments. So at closing, Sedgwick County would deposit the $180,680 into an escrow account. This is again, part of our agreement terms. And I just want to just state, I've got Scott Bruner on here. We went through this process and Scott and his legal team were fully aware of this. We vetted this with Scott, so he's fully aware of these terms in this, in this agreement. If the county does not receive adequate funds from the state to construct the hospital as now planned, the county shall then either, one, transfer the property and all obligations, including payment of special assessments to the state of Kansas, or if the state of Kansas refuses or elects not to obtain the property, transfer the property back to Lang at no cost to Lang and pay the liquidated damages described above to Lang at the time of transfer. Okay? This particular agreement term gets into the required use of the property. So a material part of this agreement is the actual construction and operate, operation of the state-operated psychiatric hospital of the property. So as such, the county shall complete construction of the property and open the hospital for its intended use no later than January 1 of 2029. And that's excluding interruptions caused by firestorms and other force majeure. Prior to that, the county shall, at Lang's request, convey the property back to Lang at no cost to Lang if improvements costing at least $100,000 have not been constructed on the property on or before January 1 of 2026. In the event the county has not received funds from the state of Kansas to return the property to the same condition as existed at the time of closing, then the county shall not be responsible or liable for returning the property to the same condition as existed at the time of closing. The parties further agree that the initial use of the property shall be a psychiatric hospital and shall be owned and continually operated by the state of Kansas as a psychiatric hospital for at least 30 years from the date as its first opens, which is the restricted period. If the property is not so operated as a psychiatric hospital for a period of 90 consecutive days during the restricted period, title to the land and all improvements shall revert to Lang if the state of Kansas fails to resume its operation as a psychiatric hospital within 60 days after written demand from Lang. And then furthermore, the property shall never be used as a jail, prison or correctional facility. So that is the agreement as it states. And then I just wanted to use this opportunity, as I'm here before you, to kind of give you an update where we're at on the mental health hospital as far as design and construction. The town hall, we went over some of these renderings and just wanted to use again, this opportunity to update the public as to where we're at. Pulse Design Group and Tess Ray is our architect and engineering team. And so they have completed design development as of July 26th of 2024. And so our timeline is that construction documents would be complete mid-October of 2024. And so we would take those documents out to bid October 24th of this year and bids would be due back to county purchasing November 26th. We would select a contractor December 5th that would go to bid board and then to commission December 11th and then the contract would be signed December 19th. Construction would begin February 2025 to be completed August of 2026. And so just want to go over some renderings. This is an aerial view. And then this is exterior rendering, so this is the front entry. This would be the building approach. And then this is the entry waiting room. And then this is the acute forensic day rooms. This is the acute patient. On the left there is the corridor and then to the upper right and the bottom are the patient rooms. This is the forensic side. On the upper left then is the corridor and then on the upper right and bottom are the patient rooms. And then just wanted to share this flyover video. And that's all I have for you this morning and I'm happy to answer any questions and would recommend that you take the action to approve the agreement.
Okay. Tanya, thank you so much for the presentation, for all the work, your team, our legal team. Obviously, we'll get a chance to thank the Lang Community Foundation, One Rise folks. And Scott that's on, thank you, Kdad's, all the support that you guys have provided in this project, something that's incredibly important to this community. So a few questions and comments. Commissioner Dennis?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I too want to thank a lot of people that made this happen. Tanya's worked very hard. Scott has worked very hard. Our legal department, facilities, our folks that work in mental health have been great supporters on this. But I want to go back in time on how we got to this point. And when I first came on the commission, the sheriff came and talked to us and explained that he's having prisoners set in jail for a year that have been charged with a crime but never convicted of any crime whatsoever. They, they come to the jail and at that point, the DA charges them, they go to court and the courts direct a competency hearing. And they go back to jail. The problem is, where do you go to competency hearing? You have to go out to Larned or Olsawatomi, mainly Larned is where that our folks go. So they're sitting in jail for a year and finally a bed opens up that they can go out and get their competency hearing. It takes two deputies and remember, back at that point in time, we were very, very short on deputies. So two deputies load up this individual and take them out to Larned. Again, once they get to Larned, they don't have the support of their family near them. They're a two or three hour drive away. They're a two or three-hour drive away. Couple of weeks later, they're ready to come out, and we have to send two deputies back out to Larned to pick them up. Again, we were very short on deputies at that point in time. So we started talking to the legislature about a regional mental health hospital. And if you look at the first title of this briefing, it talks about a regional mental health hospital. Our original thought was to have several of these spread around the state of Kansas. And we couldn't get it across the start line at all. We kept sitting there, talking and talking. When I was chairman, they had a special committee of legislators with representatives and senators that I met with several times, and trying to convince them that we need, here in Sedgwick County, one of the regional mental health hospitals. And at that time, we were advocating for 50 beds because we thought several around the state of Kansas at 50 beds was probably the way to go. Well, that group of legislators was, they listened, but I was really afraid that they weren't going to act. And finally, we said, hey, if you'll just give us some money, and besides that, there was ARPA money available, and we applied for, I think, $24 million worth of ARPA money, we said, we will build it. We won't own it, we won't operate it, but we'll take it off your hands, and we will build this facility. And that's how we got to this point today, is that we agreed to build it. You don't hear a county saying that they're going to build a state facility of any kind very often, so this is kind of unique. And it's taxing a lot of our staff because this is above and beyond their normal duties is to build a regional mental health hospital. As Tanya said, the governor made the decision to move it to 104 beds. I support that decision. Here in Sedgwick County, we have the workforce. In Larned, a little town of 20,000, it's hard to get a workforce out there in order to be able to operate this facility. Do we have the workforce here? I don't think we do today, but that's the reason we're such strong supporters of the biomed facility and the teamwork of not only our DO School, but also the KU is going to be putting their doctors through this new biomed school. So we're building the workforce. We purchased land right next to that facility for our Calm Care Crisis Center so that we can use hands-on training to train the workers in order to be able to go into this new facility. So it's all coming together, and then it got down to the point where we needed to start moving this forward. And thankfully, we had a number of people that replied to our RFP, and Lang donated the land to us. So that is something that really, all that savings goes into building that hospital and saves the taxpayers' money. So our great thanks to Lang and their efforts on this. But I just wanted to go back in time because I worked through this entire thing from the very beginning, trying to get it to this point, trying to get it across the start-finish line, and we're finally there. And I'm so proud of everyone that's been involved in this. And the state of Kansas and Scott was a great partner up there. We appreciate you very much. This is a reality. We're going to break ground on this thing in February. Unfortunately, I won't be on the bench anymore. Please invite me out there. But I appreciate all the work that everyone did. Thank you very much.
Very good. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya, for the overview. Really appreciate kind of the history in this as well. And of course, Lang, your group, it's just incredible that you guys donated that land. I mean, at the time, we were talking about 50 beds, and we were really trying, as a governor's task force, how do we figure out, how do we get the funding to get to the 104, which we all wanted to do? And so the donation allowed us to really get momentum and having that additional funding to get to the 104 beds, so really appreciate that. We've had three town halls over this so far. The first one was when we had the four shortlisted properties. That was out east, just to get an idea from the community on what they wanted to see and where they wanted to see this. I also wanted to thank Green Bush. That's one of the groups that hasn't been thanked yet, but they've done a lot of work when it comes to surveying and sending out communications and emails and just trying to keep the community as apprised as best we can. We had the second town hall at South High School because the area this is going in, students that are in the surrounding area either go to South or campus, so the third one we've had at campus. So I'm really grateful that we've been able to bring those town halls to the South side, and I appreciate the work that's gone into working that out with the schools and everybody else. I really want to thank the Lang group, though, for believing in the South side. I mean, not just with this project, but just kind of overall in general. You've been talking about bringing mental health to this space for many, many years, and so this is kind of the starting off piece and what that looks like, but definitely not the ending. So we're going to be able to bring healthcare and childcare into a place that is really needed. It's a health desert, it's a food desert, and however you want to look at it, there's just a lot of things that we could use in this area. So appreciate how much that you guys believe in the South side and allowing us to do this. I also want to thank Commissioner Dennis. This has been a ton of work. This started well before I got on the bench, and you really spearheaded a lot of that. So thank you for your continued efforts. I'm really grateful that we had the ARPA dollars that came in, so we were able to apply for those, and that really was enabled us to get this started into the state for finding the additional funding so we could open the full 104 beds at once. This is going to bring over $100 million investment in South Wichita, over 300 well-paying jobs created. That's a big deal. And so I'm just, I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the work we've done to engage the neighbors. I am proud that we're going to be able to make this as safe as possible. We have a couple of committees that have speared off from the advisory group, and one is on safety and one is on workforce. And so safety is at the forefront of every decision that we're making when it comes to design, and this is not a facility you're going to be able to walk up and get admitted. It's not a facility you're going to be able to just leave on your own accord. So it will be a very safe place, not only for the patients, but for the staff as well. I think that's incredibly important. So I just, again, want to thank everybody for all the work that's gone into this, and it's a desperately needed resource in this community. It's not going to fix all of our problems, but there's so much happening at the same time, whether it's the biomed campus and expansion of Calm Care to the MAC to this, that we have a full system growing that we're really going to be able to take care of people in our community that deserve that kind of care. So I know that workforce also is a huge part of that, and Commissioner Dennis touched on a lot of it, but we're even seeing at high school level, people are getting engaged. We have the Health Future Ready Center with 259, Haysville Public Schools, where you graduate, you can have a CNA and all sorts of things like that. So it's going to take a community effort to really address the mental health needs of this area, and I think we're on the right path. So just appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Thank you for your donation. Thank you for the additional work that you're doing because this isn't something that we're going to be running or facilitating, so it really is just, we're building this, and that's not something that necessarily was the plan. We were just advocating to get a hospital here. So I just, I'm overwhelmed with the gratitude I have for everybody who's invested their time in this, so thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say upfront, I am supporting the proposal this morning, so when there's a motion, I'll be voting yes. But I wanted to just go through a few things. When this plan started up a couple of years ago, and the county decided to send a letter to the state saying that we would essentially build this for the state, I was very skeptical this was going to actually happen. I was not very supportive of the plan. I thought it opened us up to risk, to our own taxpayers. And I would just like to say once again, I was spectacularly wrong, right? This is actually happening, and it's a kind of exciting day today to see this major step moving forward. I do have some just basic questions, just to remind myself and maybe remind the public a couple of details here. So again, Riverside Hospital, I know it was talked about. I actually thought that was a pretty good idea because of the location. I don't remember exactly why that was taken off the table, but I assume that there was a cost issue, possibly location, but who actually made the decision? Was it the state of Kansas, K-Dads? The K-Dads eventually made a decision to move in this direction versus using Riverside? Can you just remind me, how was that decision made?
Sure. We did a lot of vetting on the Riverside Hospital and provided a lot of information to K-Dads and the governor, and in the end, it was the governor and K-Dads who decided that they did not want to pursue that.
And I think it's, again, since it's going to be their building and their operation, I think that they need to make the major decisions on things like location, and this is something we should support them in. I am interested in the dollar value, the 1.4 million dollar value. Does that value have anything, is that important in some way? Is there a tax benefit or anything that comes from knowing the value is 1.4? Where'd that number come from?
So that's estimated on what it'll cost to put that infrastructure in. So I say estimated because that's not been put out for bid, so we don't know what the exact cost is.
There's two, actually, two figures that are 1.4. 1.4 is the value of the land.
Correct.
There's also 1.4 in infrastructure.
Yeah, it's kind of coincidental that it's about the same amount. But let me go back to the specials. So that's not been let yet, so it's possible that could come down in cost.
Leading me to my next, before I get to my next question.
Sure.
The value of the land at 1.4, is that important to anybody? And is it important to Lang or to us to know the value of that land? Is there some type of tax benefit or anything that happens as a consequence of having that valued at 1.4? The value of the land is 1.4 million. Does that matter to any? Is this just an interesting note, or is there some reason why the value of that land is important? Is there some benefit to the donor to have it valued at that level?
Okay. Andrew's telling me it was important for the real estate commission, the 3% on that. Also, that's how we, when we were comparing, if you go back to kind of the market analysis, we use that in comparison to the others' values of the other properties as well.
All right, very good. And then again, back to the infrastructure piece, so the 1.4 is going to be specials over 15 years, and you said the state would be paying those fees.
That's correct. They will pay that through their operating costs.
Okay, then the other, I guess my final question is this. So we have a facility to build, and we have some infrastructure to put in. Is all of that activity going to be done on the competitive bid process?
Correct, it will be. Yes.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep my comments to a minimum because there's been a lot. Thanks for the history, thanks for all the work, and everybody's, and the history and the work is just very valuable. I just would say that if not for the efforts that have been described, if not for the efforts that have been previously described, the state mental health system would still have two facilities, one in Osawatomie, a long ways away, and another one in Larned, a long ways away. I think both of those facilities were built shortly after the Civil War, and so a need was needed, and it took the efforts that have been described from this community and this leadership to get this accomplished. As Commissioner Howell said, I'm sure there were naysayers and doubters along the way, but it has come to happen. So I want to just make sure to thank everybody that's been thanked, but also Scott Bruner is online. Thank you, Scott, for your leadership as directing through this. It was great. I attended a lot of the meetings. There was a lot of information, so thank you and the K-Dads team. Thank the governor's office for supporting everything, step along the way. Thank you for our state legislators who were supportive, and again, there were doubts along the way at the state legislative area, but they came through. And so this is just another example of combined local, state, business, community, and obviously, I want to thank the Lang group. I mean, you're a big part of this, as listed out.
Appreciate the support from the county, from the commission, from the county staff. I'm really proud of the partnership, proud of the work that we've done and will continue to do, and just appreciate the ongoing support. So thank you for the opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. And again, publicly, thank you to the Lang Community Foundation and the family and everyone from One Rise for all the work you do to help the behavioral health ecosystem in this community. So a lot of work to be done, and a lot of congratulations. This is one step of moving us forward. Thank you, Tanya, to you and your team. Okay, very good. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the land donation agreement for the South Central Mental Health Hospital.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Clerk, sponsored by County Counselor.
One second.
I apologize. Does that also include the other recommended actions in association with due diligence, things of that nature?
Yes.
That does include everything you just detailed. Well, the lawyers are quick. Madam Clerk, could you start that roll again?
Commissioner Meitzner.
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis.
Hi.
Commissioner Howell.
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Beatty.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you again, everybody. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, DER 2023-00017, amendment to the July 9, 2009 edition of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Zoning Code adopted by the City of Wichita Ordinance Number 48-431 and Sedgwick County Resolution Number 137-09 as amended dealing with Article III D6 PP Renewable Energy Systems.
Very impressive. So a note on how we're going to do this. We'll get a presentation from Scott Wadel, our director of planning. We'll also, and then he'll kind of direct traffic from there. We'll come to a nice little stopping point, then we'll open up the public hearing for comment. So we'll have a couple of presentations, then we'll go from there. Scott, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present this one. Yeah, what I'll do is I'll go through some introductory comments on this, then I will turn it over to Michael Zainer with the Berkeley Group to provide a presentation on their report, and then he'll turn it back over to me. I'll follow up with then some highlights and overview of an alternative amendments to the Unified Zoning Code, point out what some of the differences are from that and what the MAPC recommended, and then that'll provide an opportunity then for questions about that. So, good morning. So this item is on today's agenda because it was deferred by the Board of County Commissioners on June 5. At that time, the commission indicated that the purpose of the deferral was to provide an opportunity for the Berkeley Group to formulate and submit additional recommendations and information to assist in the commission's deliberations. On March 6, and this is related, the Board of County Commissioners extended the solar moratorium to September 13 of this year. That was done as a separate but related item to this DER case. So this DER case is just about the amendments and proposed changes to the Unified Zoning Code. So the recommended action for this particular item is from the Planning Commission, and it remains the same as what you've seen before and what members of the public have seen before. It is important to note that this item is about, it has implications for commercial and industrial-scale solar, not accessory uses. So this, the regulations that we have been reviewing and discussing do not impact solar panels on top of someone's house. This is really about the commercial and industrial-scale solar. In terms of the staff report, a couple of highlights from that is that in addition to the recommendation from the Planning Commission, the staff report also includes a review of the process from late 2023 through today. Also included are attachments with public input collected through the town hall event online survey and comments that have been submitted throughout the process. The attachments also include the Berkeley Report. The Berkeley Group's report is a review of the Planning Commission's recommended Unified Zoning Code Solar Energy Conversion System amendments. So basically, the changes that the Planning Commission recommended. The goal of hiring a consultant has always been to build upon the input, discussions, and analysis to date. The three main components of the analysis were, one, examination of the amendments recommended by the Planning Commission; two, consideration of the commissioners' areas of interest; and three, up-to-date research on best practices and language commonly used for the regulation of solar energy conversion systems. We have provided the public input, we staff have provided the public input collected through this process to the Berkeley Group, and use this as an opportunity to build on the information received and the dialogue to date. The Berkeley Group's involvement provides an additional viewpoint of analysis. They are a professional consulting group with an eye to national development of the solar industry, general standards, and common practices. Mr. Michael Zainer with Berkeley Group is here to present their review and answer questions. So now I'll turn it over to Michael to do the presentation, and we'll come back to answer questions and with additional information after he answers any questions that come up.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Scott. Michael, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be with you. Thank you for the introduction, Scott. Really appreciated the opportunity to work with the county and work with your staff. Just want to run through this. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I know there's a lot of public comment, and you all may have some comments and discussion and questions. So just a little bit about us. Again, we are a local government consulting firm. We do not work with private sector. We work with towns, cities, counties, principally in Virginia, but we also work in other states, Kansas, obviously, Texas, Colorado, and North Carolina. Our focus of our services, certainly land use planning, but also... but also solar, utility scale solar in particular, but also almost whole of government, executive services, education sector, human resources, and supporting local governments and regional governments. We've been involved in utility scale solar land use regulation since 2017, principally in, again, in Virginia, but expanding outward. Our, one of our principals and co-founders began working with localities in Virginia at that time. Subsequent to that, he developed what's called a PAS memo for the American Planning Association, a Planning Advisory Services Memo on utility scale solar. And that was issued in 2019. And, and we've been involved in the development of other best practice recommendations and trainings, and also, of course, the review of projects in the state, outside of the state, and, and development of policies and regulations and the like. I started with the Berkeley Group in 2021. So the last three years, heavily involved in developing regulations, developing policies, and reviewing projects, again, in Virginia. When I started, we were working with Johnson County, probably last four or five months of that project when I started with them, Johnson County, Kansas. And we also worked with Pueblo County, Colorado, but again, a number of communities in Virginia. And just to kind of frame our experience in, in Virginia, in 2020, the legislature there adopted the Clean Economy Act, which mandated that the two largest utilities providers in Virginia had to convert to 100% renewable, renewable energy sources by 2045 and 2050 respectively. So we have seen a number of projects in the state, and it's very active. And certainly not a mandate like that here in Kansas, as far as we understand, based on our research. But it certainly has driven a lot of the, the project volume that we've experienced in Virginia. So not with me today, but others that worked on this project were Lynn, Lynn Edwards and Luke Peters, both planners with, with the Berkeley Group. So Scott framed our scope of work, but again, we were reviewing and assessing the, the work that had been done, the MAPC amendments, examining those amendments and recommendations, considering areas of interest that we understand from this board, and assessing the relevance of those to the recommended amendments and regulations, and then doing up-to-date best practice research, common, presenting common regulatory language for these, for these facilities, and assessing the recommended amendments relative to best practices, and then developing recommendations. And again, we understood the goal, and this is again framed in our report, is to ensure that future SESCS development meets community needs and is consistent with best practices for the regulation of this land use. So a summary of our, our report, this is laid out by the sections. Introduction, again, laying out the scope of work, our understanding of the project, and then setting kind of some overview of national, state, and local context for this land use. Existing county policies and regulations, reviewing your current comprehensive plan, the community investments plan, as well as your unified zoning ordinance regulations as they currently exist. And then reviewing the MAPC recommended amendments, summarizing those amendments, and then identifying the areas of interest, again, relayed to us by staff and expressed by the board. And then we lay out policy and regulatory considerations. So these are not in and of themselves necessarily best practices, but these are the topics and areas of, of concern or areas of consideration that, that we encourage communities to look at. This land use in terms of changing the land use in the area around it, location, composition, infrastructure, environmental and visual impacts, impacts to agricultural and forested lands, relationship to developed areas and municipal boundaries, stormwater management, native and pollinator-friendly plantings, decommissioning, potential for contamination, administrative impacts and needs, and economic impacts. And then we lay out a discussion of best practices and a review and assessment and recommendations. And we laid these out by topic areas, these nine topic areas. And I won't touch on them here, I'll touch on them on the next slide when we go over, two slides away when we go over our recommendations. And then our conclusion. So with our report, we provided five attachments, three of them from Johnson County, their current comprehensive plan that we assisted them in working to amend, their ordinance definitions, and their use standards for utility scale solar, as well as battery energy storage. And those are referenced in our recommendations. We also provided some examples of text, another example of regulatory text from our work with Grayson County, Virginia. And then an example of conditional use conditions from a locality we work with in, in Virginia, Charlotte County, Virginia. So our recommendations, we covered under, again, nine topics, and I believe we had a total of 19 overarching recommendations, but I believe with some of the sub-regulations, it was a total of 44. Generally, under our comprehensive plan, under Topic 1, our recommendation was to consider whether it is preferred or necessary to more directly address acceptable and unacceptable aspects and impacts of solar energy conversion systems relative to design, citing location, size, and scale, and the relationship, relationship to residential land uses and urban growth areas within the comprehensive plan. We were recognizing the MAPC recommendation that gave deference to the comprehensive plan and encouraged some potential review of that document to see if it can be elaborated on in terms of the, the preferences relative to the development of this land use. Under Topic 2, structure and format of regulations, our recommendation generally was to define the use, list it separately in the base zoning districts from utility major, and consider limiting the zoning districts in which the use is allowed, but also organizing the regulations in a, a more consistent flow. That was, excuse me, recommendation 3 and 4, in terms of how those are organized. Topic 3, define the use, again, touching on an earlier recommendation, defining the use separately from utility major. Recommendation 6, consider establishing terms and definitions that are based upon scale. Recommendation 7, establishing terms and definitions relative to battery energy storage, as well as other terms and definitions on the technical components of facilities in terms that may be used in the administration of regulations to ensure clarity and consistency. Under Topic 4, zoning districts and urban growth areas. Recommendation 8, again, limit the zoning districts in which those uses, both solar and battery energy storage, may be allowed. Recommendation 9, consider some limitation on the size of projects or distance to municipalities. And again, with, with a lot of these recommendations, it's, it's very community specific. We want to make sure that communities are evaluating these topic areas and these regulatory areas to determine if it's the right fit for them. And I think in our report, we tried to convey some areas where many and most communities, as they're evaluating this, they do impose a regulation, if not a policy standard. And I, and I think that's, that's, was intended to be how you evaluated that report. Recommendation 9A, again, engage with municipal governments to seek their official recommendation for any regulatory prohibition or limits, and give great weight to their recommendations. Topic 5, application requirements. And this was reviewing your existing regulations and the amended regulations or the recommended amendments. What additional application components could be required with a conditional use permit application? Some of this language you have in the amendments and the existing ordinance, but we felt like those can be improved upon concept plan, a detailed project narrative, draft grading plan, draft landscape plan, a visual impact analysis, a community impact assessment, traffic and transportation assessment, and then require additional project information through conditions, that, information that could be provided subsequently, but nonetheless prior to the issuance of actual construction permits. Topic 6, in terms of minimum development standards, and these are all ones 12A through 12G, are things that are addressed in the existing regulations and the amended, the recommended amendments. But we felt like there was some opportunity to clarify those or make them more robust. One of them, you know, 12A, you certainly set a maximum height, but we also find setting a maximum height for the lowest edge of the panel is also important from a stormwater standpoint. Recommendation 12B, addressing setbacks, both from the perimeters of property and abutting property in the right-of-way, but also from residences potentially. Fencing, signage in terms of warning signage, requirements for buffer and screening, requirements regarding the undergrounding of utility lines, and then fire EMS training and coordination. Topic 6, minimum development standards continued. And these are additional regulatory standards, additional standards that we would recommend that you consider. 13A, maximum project size, 13B, project separation, minimum distances between projects, maximum area of panel coverage on any individual site, requirements for liability insurance, specific regulations for battery energy storage, and additional regulatory items addressing slopes, setbacks from buffers and wetlands, storage removal of damaged equipment and access. And as we talk about in the report, for many of these, all of these, you can address through policy, you can address through regulation, you can address through conditions. But I think as we summarize at the end, it's creating a level of predictability, both for applicants and the public about what a project could potentially be and look like, and where it could be located. Topic 7, construction mitigation. And I would tell you the construction period, you know, people may have opinions about what the resulting project may look like, how impactful it may be to a particular area. But I think our experience is that during the construction period, that's when a project can be most impactful and, and in a real way, depending on the size of it. So we recommend a requirement for a construction mitigation or management and mitigation plan. We recommend that construction schedules and at least acknowledgement of the impacts be addressed in a application, but subsequently that there be some coordination, especially as it impacts public infrastructure and resources on what that plan is for that construction period. Recommendation 16, consider whether additional financial and/or staff resources may be required to address the administrative and inspection requirements for one or more projects. A lot of the localities that we work with, this would by far be the largest type of development project that they've ever seen in their locality. And in many cases, they're dealing with more than one of these at a time. And they may or may not have more than one inspector at best. And that may not be the case for every community, but the, these projects can be impactful. EMS, erosion and sediment control inspections, utility inspections, building inspections, some of those can stress local capacity. Recommendation 17, project conditions, consider project conditions to provide for pre-construction improvements to roadways, bonding requirements to repair damage during the course, course of project development, and pre and post-construction surveying of roads to determine what necessary, what repairs may be necessary. Topic 8, decommissioning. 18A, address equipment removal depth within the decommissioning regulations. Establish a time for decommissioning and reclamation. What is the overall horizon for that to occur? 18C, length of non-operation prior to decommissioning. How long does a facility need to be in non-operation before it's required to be decommissioned or initiate that decommissioning process? 18D, financial assurance or bonding associated with decommissioning. And then lastly, environmental and groundwater testing. And then our, our last recommendation is permit conditions. And we encourage you to now, at this stage, as you're developing regulations, to consider a template of potential use permit conditions. Certainly, there's going to be application-specific conditions, location-specific impacts that need to be addressed through conditions. But really consider what would it look like when you're ready to issue a permit in terms of the topics that you want to address, the things you've not dealt with and addressed specifically in your regulations that may need to be addressed through permit conditions, ensuring that you can do that in a, in a reasonable and viable way. So that, that's really it. And our conclusion was, you know, the process that, that you employed, that your staff employed and the MAPC went through was robust and thorough. We felt there was effective engagement of stakeholders, and a variety of, of the aspects that we consider important were certainly considered. We felt like the current regulations and amendments, they address many of the best practices for the regulation of this land use, many of the topics were addressed. But beyond the recommendations made herein, we felt like they were appropriate and not counter to standard and best practices. However, we want to make sure again that, that regulations establish predictability with respect to the outcomes, and that those outcomes align with community preferences and serve to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And while we felt like that objective was achieved in many aspects of the regulations, as well as policies, there are areas for additional consideration through our recommendations. And I'll let Scott elaborate on the, on the next steps I think that, that staff has taken on that point.
All right. Well, thank you, Michael. So with that information, then, I just want to remind everyone that in terms of the staff report, the recommendation that you see on the staff report is the same one from the Planning Commission, and it's the same one that they came up with, came out with in February of this year. But in addition to the Planning Commission recommendation, recommended amendments, there's also an attachment to the staff report for the B O C C. And that attachment is Unified Zoning Code amendments. It is labeled the Alternative Proposed Changes Attachment and dated August 2, 2024 at the top. That document was recently developed by staff and incorporates many of the concepts and recommendations articulated by the Berkeley Group. But not all are included, or some are adjusted, in order to meet the specific needs of Cedric County. So similar to the others, Unified Zoning Code amendments that we've brought before, we've used different text types to identify different types of changes in that document. So the standard, you know, black text that you normally see is what's already existing in the Unified Zoning Code. The yellow highlighted text are the portions that are recommended by the Planning Commission, so ones that you've seen previously. And then the red line text are those new portions that have been developed for consideration based on the information provided by the Berkeley Group. And then I'll go through some of the highlights of changes that are included in that alternative amendment. So I've organized, organized these by topic area, and we'll be reviewing them according to the order they appear in the amendments in that text document. So in terms of definitions and general requirements, so definitions would be added. Those include applicant, facility area, project area, and classifications for solar systems based on acreages. So we would add a definition for small, which would be 10 acres or less, medium, which is more than 10 and less than 50, and large, which is 50 acres or more. In addition, the following limitations would apply. Large-scale solar projects would be prohibited in the urban growth area, with an exception for transmission or collection lines. No solar project area would exceed 1,280 acres. No project area would be located in more than four contiguous sections of land. No solar project would be located closer than two miles to another solar project area, with some exceptions for small-scale solar projects. The maximum area of coverage for a solar project would not exceed 65% of the total project area acreage. The applicant would be required to notify cities within two miles of the proposed solar facility area at least by the time of application. And in general, these definitions and requirements would not be something that could be waived by the governing body. So that's not a list of all the amendments, but I do want to pause for a moment and just discuss the one on urban growth areas and some quick thoughts. In reviewing what other counties have done, and that was actually something that had been discussed at some point in these discussions going back more than a year. And the approach that you see here in the alternative amendments, focusing on the urban growth area, it's similar in concept, but more focused because the city, urban growth areas are based on municipal considerations, anticipated population growth, patterns of municipal growth, current infrastructure limitations, delivery of future municipal services, and environmental factors, and those are updated, modified, and go through a number of review steps. The intent on focusing on the urban growth areas is to help limit adverse impacts on future growth of municipalities, which is recommended in our comprehensive plan, and to highlight potential issues with providing public services and utilities in both now and into the future. In addition, I want to emphasize that this regulation should not be construed as the county turning over decision-making to local cities. The urban growth areas are county regulations in the unincorporated areas and are based on the growth, safety, development, and needs of the county and its citizens in general. No part of these potential regulations give cities veto power, decision-making authority, or county processes in the unincorporated area. And that's standard with the current process and the zoning code for urban growth areas and remains the same with this. In addition, beyond that, there are additional application requirements that would apply in this alternative amendments to the zoning code. The application requirements for large-scale and medium-scale projects would include the following, and I'm not going to go through these in details, but just quickly list them, so concept plans, a narrative, a grading plan, landscape plan, visual impacts analysis, community impact analysis, traffic and transportation analysis, and construction management mitigation plan, and you'll see that those very much reflect items that have been identified in the Berkeley report. In addition, there would be appropriate liability insurance based on the project scale in terms of requirement. There would also be slope information required with prohibition on solar projects on slopes 15% or greater, in addition, and additional buffers may be required for wetlands and waterways. There would also be plans for collection, storage, and removal of damaged panels and components, also including the timing of when that would be addressed, and I know that that had come up in some of the discussions. In terms of design requirements, the maximum height of the lowest edge of the panel would not be allowed to exceed 10 feet, that was something that had been identified by the Berkeley Group. Setbacks from structures would be at least 100 feet from the project boundary line, and that is structures that are considered part of this project, would have to be at least 100 feet from the project boundary lines. Setbacks from solar structures, including panels and battery storage, they would have to be at least 250 feet from any dwelling unit, and that had been another item that had come up in community discussions. Fencing would be required around any solar structure except for panels. Warning and contact signage would be required at the facility, there had been some discussion about how would folks know who to contact if an emergency came up. Retention of native vegetation and tree lines would be required, and that is in response to some of the public comments about the need for screening. In addition, screening would be required along any side or rear property line when the solar project is adjacent to a dwelling unit, and that had been a comment that we had seen from a number of public stakeholder groups. Other requirements would include financial assurances, those requirements are enhanced in the alternative amendments. There would be a contact requirement, or I'm sorry, there would be, yes, contact requirement for inactivity, and in terms of decommissioning, all equipment would be required to be removed, regardless of depth, and the ground regraded and reseeded as natural condition as possible. However, I would mention that there is a caveat in there that the applicant or owner can request, make a provision to request to have that changed so that they wouldn't have to remove it all the way. So the default in this case, the, the recommendation coming to you from the planning commission is to remove it to a depth of four feet. This alternative recommendation would say the default is remove it all, and the applicant or the property owner can come to you and say, hey, we'd like to request that we don't have to remove it all, we'll keep a certain amount in there. So those, oh, and then also, an important point here is that groundwater testing remains included as a requirement similar to the one coming to you from the planning commission. This applies pre, during, and post the project. So I know that had come up in a number of different discussions, so I just want to highlight that that's still included. So that is, those are highlights from this alternative set of zoning code amendments. Now, in terms of the actions, so again, I've mentioned this a couple of times, but the recommended action, which is coming to you from the planning commission, is to approve the planning commission's proposed amendments, sign the resolution and authorize the resolution to be published. Now, because it's recommendation coming to you from the planning commission, and because this is code change, that would only require three out of five votes to be approved. There are alternative actions, and those are, if you want to approve the, the alternative amendments, that would require a two-thirds majority or four out of five votes because that's an override of the planning commission. Likewise, if you want to make additional modifications to that version or the version coming to you from the planning commission, those would also require an override of the planning commission, so four out of five votes. As always, you can defer this item, that would require three votes, or you can send it back to the planning commission, and that would require three votes. So that's the presentation, we tried to give you an overview of what's in the staff report, what the recommendation is, what the Berkeley's group assessment was, and then also what the alternative amendments to the zoning code contain. It's quite a bit of information, I've tried to go through it relatively quickly, and we'll see where questions go, but we're all, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for staff before we open up the public hearing? Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate the, the presentation, and this is a lot to take in, again, this being released in its final version on August the 2nd, and today is the 7th. So the, the amount of material here is significant. I have asked the chairman, it's my preference, I've asked the chairman to go ahead and conduct another public hearing today, which we, we don't legally have to do, but I think it's what we want to hear from people. They're just seeing this for the first time as well, there's some new ideas in here that have not been talked about, it's, it's kind of a new compilation of, of where we happen to be at the moment, and it is obviously subject to change, and so I do want to hear from people to see their reaction to this proposal today. I'm getting hammered with a lot of email and not being able to keep up with it yet, and so it's my preference, so we would hear from people today, we'd hear from staff, and then we would take this up next week for final adoption. I don't know that we need to have another public hearing next week, I don't think we need to. I do want to hear from people today, but it'd be my intention to take in all the information, give me a chance to continue reading this, continue to get my questions answered through staff, and actually make a recommendation to adopt it next week rather than today. So it's my preference to go through the process, but not actually refer it back and not take action today, but to actually just suspend, if you will, the action of adopting or whatever we're going to do with this until next week. That's my preference, chairman, just wanted to state that upfront, and if anybody has any other opinions, I'd love to, to discuss that as well, but that's my preference today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Meisner, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell, I, I agree with your theory here on this, but I have two, I have two questions for staff. So Scott, on the, on slide four, it says Community Investment Plan, is that, is that the same as the Comprehensive Plan?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay.
In a future update, I'd like to change the name to just the Comprehensive Plan, but right now it's...
So for, for us and for everybody, the, the term Comprehensive Plan also means the Community Investment Plan, and that plan is always for 20-year look ahead.
Thereabouts, it can depend, but you're right, it, it looks out quite a ways out in terms of what should happen in the future, what do we want to be as a community?
And it's, and it's done every five years, updated every five years?
Well, it depends when resources can be programmed and allocated for it, ideally it would be every five years, but what we've seen more recently is that we do adjustments and modifications to certain sections of it as opposed to a whole rewrite, and, and that is, it has been revisited a number of times in the last four years.
Okay. And I, I've participated sometimes in that, and it is an excruciatingly painful task to do. Is that required as a municipality in an area, that we have to do that? Is that required?
Well, not so much for the amendments, but there is a review process that I believe is at least a best practice, if not required, and so...
Okay, so it's not a federal or...
Not a federal, it would be driven by the state, so...
Okay. And it's, so it's not an MPO?
No, no, sir.
Or it's driven by the state requesting updates on this? Okay. In that plan, so the second part of my question is, I know there's a lot of discussion about the urban growth areas, so in that plan, the various cities, the 20 cities in Sedgwick County minus Eastborough because it's surrounded, they, they submit what they believe is their urban growth area?
That actually, that's a good question. So that can come up, that can be initiated individually by the cities, we like to do it as a larger group, and typically have conversations with the Sedgwick County Association of Cities SCAC to kind of kick that off in a coordinated fashion. Recently, we have had requests, you might remember some zoning cases with, the one in particular that stands out is there was a small city that had a, there was a, a burrow pit that had been dug out, and there was a shooting range proposed. Well, that was within a mile of that city, but their urban growth area didn't extend that far, so we've had some recent requests to update those and review that, and in fact, that was one of our budget requests, which is being under, which is under consideration, is some funding to assist with that.
Okay, and so, under the rules of planning, of applications, if it's within the, an urban growth area, that city gets to weigh in on it, but they're not the final decision?
That is correct. They provide, there's a formalized process, if, and so we would notify them that a application has been submitted that is within their urban growth area.
Okay.
Then with that notification, they would have the opportunity for their planning commission to hear it, so not their council, but their planning commission. Their planning commission then would have the opportunity to recommend approval, or recommend denial, or whatever action they want to take. If they recommend denial, then it changes the vote requirement, it's a self-imposed restriction that the county has placed on itself, that it changes the vote requirement at the county level to be able to approve that zoning case.
To the four out of five? Four out of five votes?
Four out of five.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Kirk always reminds me on this one, there is a process, that is with the first time that it goes to the B O C C. If the case is returned to the MAPC and then later on comes back to the B O C C, that vote requirement is eliminated, it does not stand...
Just a simple majority, then?
Well, it depends on what, other things, but the urban area of influence no longer affects the vote.
Okay, that's helpful for, to remind us all, but also for the public as you come up to visit with us, and it doesn't prohibit, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I had three questions. In your alternate amendments, alternative amendments that you listed, at the end, you said something about, that I didn't hear exactly, waived by government body? Are you saying it can or it cannot be waived?
No, there's, many of the requirements can be waived by the governing body, however, there is a specific section of items that cannot, that would not be allowed to under this amendment, and those, I would point out that those include the definitions about what's large, small, and medium.
Sure, okay.
But it also includes that large-scale solar projects would be prohibited in the urban growth area, so therefore, projects that are 50 acres in size or more would not be allowed in the urban growth area, that would not be something that the governing body could waive, because depending on which section of the code it's in.
Right, okay.
Also, that the limitation on solar project areas, and that they, they would be limited to a maximum of 1,280 acres, that is also in that section and could not be waived by the governing bodies. Likewise, the requirement that they could, solar projects could not be located in more than four contiguous sections of land, and that they could not be closer than two miles to another, so...
Okay.
There's a number of things in there.
Okay, well, thank you for letting me ask these questions and clarification, and Michael, thank you and your company for the, for the audit that pretty much mirrored closely what the planning commission had recommended originally, so thank you for all the hard work, and thanks, chairman, for letting me ask those questions.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and ask some technical questions now, so appreciate the chance to speak a second time. On the, on the, the prohibitions for putting these near a city, the, the growth area is off-limits, and you said if it's 50 or less, it can be waived by that, by that city, is that what you just said?
Actually, no, in, in this case, great question. So in this case, the prohibition is on large-scale solar projects in the urban growth area, so 50 acres or more. However, projects that are considered, meet the definition of small or medium, so small is 10 acres or less, medium is more than 10 and less than 50, those could, would, would be allowed in the urban growth areas.
Allowed by right?
Well, no, they would still go through the conditional use process, so they could at least make the...
The city doesn't have a decision to make regarding whether, whether or not it can go in the growth area.
They would still have, it's still in the urban area of influence, so they would still go through the same existing process, providing input through that formalized process that goes through their planning commission.
Okay, so here's a technical question, so let's say someone wants to put a, a five-acre, small-scale solar farm on their property. If they do that, then, and they're successfully getting that approved through this, through this process, the nearest one to them would be two miles away?
It's a good example that you brought up, because with small scale, it's different than with others, and so J R, Kirk, if you want to address that one...
Also, point to me that, where is it in, in the document, show me where it's written, please.
Certainly. Commissioner, once again Kirk Spence, Deputy County Counselor. If you look at section... is going to be section 4D, it specifically indicates that no S E C S project area boundary shall be nearer than two miles to any other S E C S project area boundary. This distance shall be measured in a straight line from the closest project area boundary of one S E C S to the nearest proposed project area boundary of another S E C S. This regulation shall not apply to any small-scale S E C S that does not connect to any private transmission lines or connection lines of any other S E C S, nor shall the two-mile calculation include any such small-scale S E C Ss that do not connect to the private transmission lines or collection lines of any other S E C S. So basically, if you're dealing with a small one that's located in a specific area, that two-mile boundary, that two-mile calculation will likely not include that. And that's on page three of the alternate set of potential changes.
Hate to parse words there, but you said the word likely just now, and...
Well, I, I said likely because I, because I was addressing small-scale S E C Ss. The nuance here, and why I said likely, is because the language is also written so that you couldn't have 20 or 30 S E, small-scale S E C Ss, they're all in close proximity and all connect together and basically function as a larger S E C S.
Now, this, this exemption for the small scale, let's say there's a, a medium size, it's 50 acres, 50, say it's 50 acres, does that then prohibit, make a prohibition for something that's larger, like up to 1,280 to be up, has to be two miles away by, as a bird flies?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's say you have a, a 50-acre solar farm, can someone come in later on and add a, something in small scale next to that? Is that still a prohibition against the small ones at that point?
A small-scale would...
The first one goes in as 50 acres or more, and then subsequent to that, somebody wants to put in a small scale?
That's right next door to it, that's, that's fine.
It's okay.
Yeah. Now, once again, it can't be connecting with the medium scale and effectively expanding it into a larger size.
I guess, I'm just curious about this two-mile radius, because it seems to me that what triggers the two-mile radius is that there's a, a medium or large solar farm, and that's what creates the two-mile, the two-mile prohibition, so another 50-acre, I'm sorry, 50-acre solar farm cannot be within two miles, that's clear, right?
That's correct, right.
But if it's small scale, you say is allowed, if it's a small scale, it can be within that.
That's correct.
Okay. What, what does it mean by the words... What does it mean by the words sections here? And item seer says contiguous sections of land. What does that mean exactly?
That's the common reference point of 640 acres, like sections.
640 acres being a square mile? That's, so it can't be more than four square miles, but that would be a lot more than 1,280 acres. That's twice that.
That would be, but that would also give them some flexibility to mix and match within that area.
Okay, and do they have to be touching? These pieces of land have to be touching each other?
So, so we, we discussed that in another regulation where we talked about what I term unattached portions of a project area. So that's actually section 4E, where it basically says, hey, they can't be more than half a mile apart. So you do want some cohesiveness and closeness in terms of different areas.
Could they be, so you could be on a straight line, so to speak? You could run 1,280 acres in a straight line and have them spaced apart? That would create a very interesting boundary around that.
Well, once again, that goes back, I think, to the four contiguous, four contiguous sections.
All right, so it has to stay within the four square miles, okay. I guess, let's say you have two landowners that want to do this, and they're both, they both want to do 50 acres, and they're, and they're within a mile of each other. Is this going to be a race to get this approved? Are they going to be trying to apply at the same time? And they're trying to see which one gets their approval done? Whoever gets there first, they win, and the other guy can't do it then? I mean?
I mean, ultimately, the approval of one would preclude another one. I mean, now with that said, I would point out, we have had zero applications for 50-acre
It's just interesting to me that we allow with the 1,280, but ultimately, a 50-acre farm would actually create a prohibition on anything else essentially within that boundary. That's just very interesting.
And if I recall correctly, I believe that's, that might also be how Johnson Counties is set up, if I recall correctly. Just in terms of where you're going to draw a line of size and the distances between.
One of my, one of my other questions I have at the moment is regarding the bond for decommissioning or remediation. Who sets the bond level? And, and let's say this, let's say the farmer's in there working for several generations. That bond may now, may no longer cover the cost. How is that adjusted?
If I may have a second, staff can step in as well, but I believe that it actually is periodically updated and addressed. So if I may have a second to review. Yep. Okay, so for reference for the public, this is going to be section six, section six, 6A A, 1A, where it talks about the fiscal assurances of decommissioning. And specifically, that subsection indicates the amount of, of financial assurance shall be the full amount of the estimated decommissioning and reclamation costs without regard to the possible salvage material. And then B indicates that the estimated decommissioning and reclamation costs shall be calculated every five years, at which time applicant shall deposit additional surety if and in the amount that the new cost estimate exceeds the existing financial assurance. So there is some contemplation for recalculation.
Who holds, again, so there's a financial payment that's made, that's held by someone. Who holds that, who holds that fund?
So, right now, what's said is there are options for cash to be held in escrow. There's also the option for bond or other financial assurances, as the board has indicated. That specific level of detail of who specifically holds it, I don't believe that's addressed here, though, I mean, we've seen with some situations, I think with accounts in escrow, I think maybe a bank or somebody else may potentially hold it. But ultimately, we would be able to call it.
Okay. And who, who makes the estimate, who makes the estimation for how much this bond or escrow needs to be? Who, who has responsibility for making the estimate?
I believe that'd simply be staff.
So our county staff would do that, okay. Back to the, the land size one more time. Let's say a business wants to build a, something that's, something less than 1,280 acres, and they come, want to come in later on and add more to their project. Is that a separate project, or can they simply amend that, add to the previous project?
I, I mean, you, you say amend, ultimately, the conditional use, ultimately, the conditional use is going to be for a set area. So if they're wanting to expand that, that would require an additional application, whether that be, whether that be by amendment or something of the like.
So I'm just wondering if the two-mile situation kicks in at that point or not? Say they have several different solar farms and they've done this in different projects, are they going to have to do, have these two-mile, two-mile separations is the question?
I believe, I believe if it's just an amendment, I think the contemplation, it's, it's still one project.
All right, so I have a lot to work, I have a lot to work, again, I know, I hope to push this off till next week. I think I probably lost everybody in the audience. But anyway, this is important stuff. This is the type of stuff that's going to have to come up, and it's very important that we're crisp on this. And as I read this, it looks like someone who is extremely smart wrote this, but it's extremely high-level, and I'm not sure it covers all the different scenarios that come up. So I've just got some concerns on interpretation of what's been written here, to make sure we understand these things are going to happen and how we're going to handle it. I'll suspend my questions for later. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Lottas.
Thank you. I just have one clarifying question. We've talked a lot about the two-mile radius. That's just for above ground, correct? Like the underground lines can go?
That's a great point, Commissioner. With the way it's framed, we, we term these as the limitations on the facility area. And what's specifically excluded from the facility area is any underground private transmission or collection lines. So ultimately, those underground lines could be closer together if they're trying to merge at a specific location down the road or something like that. That is excluded, you are correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Couple of questions for staff and legal. I appreciate Berkeley Group's work on this. I appreciate our staff report. There's a lot of man-hours that have went into all this. There's things in these reports that I like, and there's things I don't like. And I'm trying to reconcile in my mind how I come to, how I bring this all together into something that I can approve. So this discussion around energy diversification, I think, is interesting, it's intriguing. The feedback from our 20 cities, I think, is important. That's also a tough balance. These private property rights and our farmers that are having difficulties in economic times, water usage, all of these things matter, and they matter greatly, especially as someone who lives in an urban growth area. I'm incredibly sensitive to the things that are being told to people that live in the urban growth areas. So all of that, I'm trying to reconcile, but I have a lot of heartburn still on a lot of these things. So there were some things that were mentioned that I just want clarity on. Michael, I think one of the things you said, that it is best practice, urban growth areas are buffers around cities. You're seeing that as best practice to put that into a regulation at this point in time? Because some of the information that I had reviewed, I, I'm not sure I came to that same conclusion.
I would tell you, the majority of the localities that we work with that have municipal governments within their localities, that they, they have imposed buffers. Now, some of those localities, it's, it's a bright line. You have to meet that, that distance requirement. Others do allow for waivers by this body through the consideration of the permit application. All of the communities that we work with address it through their policy, through their comprehensive plan, give some guidance to that. But I would, I don't know any locality that we work with directly on the review of projects administering their regulations as third-party reviewer, that has municipal boundaries, that, that doesn't preclude some proximity of a project within that, within a proximity of that municipal boundary.
Okay. There was a comment made, I don't know if it was Scott or Kirk, about conditional use, and if we approve and adopt something, it will preclude us from using conditional use. What are those things that if we adopt in this code would preclude us from utilizing conditional uses?
I think that might have been with the discussion of things being, large-scale solar being prohibited in the urban growth areas. So there are things in this alternative zoning code amendments, the restrictions on how, how big they can be, the restrictions on no large scale in the urban growth areas, those are things that simply, if you want to do those things, exceed those limitations, you, you would not be able to apply at that point, because that's something that's in the section that can't be waived. Otherwise, you can submit for a conditional use, and it goes through the conditional use process, and there's opportunities to add, you know, customize conditions to apply to the.
But there are certain elements that we cannot maneuver. There's no flexibility in certain items. That is size and urban growth area, namely?
That's right, that's right. And those are, page three, is what I'm getting. So if you look at page three, and you'll see about more than halfway down the page, you'll see H, and it says, notwithstanding any other language, the contrary found in this code, comma, the provision of section 3D 6P P 4 shall not be waived by the appropriate governing body. So the things in that section can't be waived.
Understood. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. I'm sure more will come up. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, I just have one brief question. If we preclude any solar, large solar in the urban growth areas, how many hundred thousand acres are still available in the county for development of solar?
I do not have that number off the top of my head, but it's a significant portion of the county. You know, we can, we can work on getting you a map of the urban growth areas for this discussion. It might take a little bit of time, but you'll see that there's a significant portion of the unincorporated county, the majority of it being in the western portion of Sedgwick County, where there are not urban growth areas.
But it's hundreds of thousands of acres?
It's quite a few, yes, sir.
That are still available for solar development. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments remaining for staff? Okay, seeing none, I want to formally open up the public hearing. A couple of thoughts here. When we get to a specific number, we typically limit comment to three minutes. If you need a little bit more time, this is, this is going to be an opportunity in a venue, we're going to give you some more time here today. We want to hear from the public in this. It's very important. If a commissioner has to get up to run to the restroom, we're going to keep pushing through. It's not because they don't want to hear what you're saying, it's because they need to use restroom. So please give them some grace in doing so, but we're going to continue to push on through this. So as you come, we'll just ask for your name and your address. The clerk will set three minutes. If you're not finished up yet, we'll work with you. We want to make sure we hear your thoughts. So if I don't pronounce your name correctly, please forgive me. I'm trying to read your writing and, and use my reading comprehension, so. First up is Amy Siple, Seiple? Seiple, yes, Seiple. And after that is Mr. Martin Bo Tinker. Good morning. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Amy Seiple. I live just north of Bentley. Thank you, commissioners, for your service. I have emailed all of you with references for the points that I'm making today. I would like to stand today to testify and support a permanent moratorium on commercial solar for Sedgwick County for, I'll just say 10 of the following reasons. Number one, these projects would not exist without heavy tax subsidies. So it is not a matter of private property rights if landowners are incentivized to sell their property that we're paying for. Number two, this acquired property is often removed then from the tax rolls. So the rest of the county gets to have their taxes increased because this land is removed from the tax rate. So we pay for it again. I'll skip to number four. Eminent domain is generally used for these high-voltage transmission lines would affect, which affects neighboring communities. Number five, this destabilizes our energy infrastructure, and Kansas exports 50% of the energy that we use already. So we are exporting that. Does our, do our electric bills go down? No, they don't. Instead, Kansans pay for the expensive infrastructure of these high-voltage lines. We lose land out of agricultural use. This isn't just land sitting there. This is, have we gone to the grocery store lately? Do we want our food prices to go up even more? And we lose taxable income. I mean, Kansans are taking it up the rear when you are looking at putting these projects in place. Most of the leases are owned by foreign companies. So I sent that to you, and you can look on K-State's website, it will show you the foreign nations that are owning these leases. Do we want more of our land to go to foreign nations and foreign companies? I mean, would you be okay with me selling my land to China or Iran? I really doubt it. 80% of solar panels are made from slave labor. So the Uighur Muslims are making most of our solar panels. The cobalt, 70% of that comes from slave labor from the Congo. It is immoral for us to support an industry that is built on the back of slave labor. The use of water is shocking, but yet we're talking about limiting water for irrigation for our farming industry? Look at the price of food. They're talking about food insecurities in the mainstream media right now. We need to take this very seriously. And then finally, well, two more points. I will say this curses the next generation. We have 35 trillion in debt already, and you want to add these subsidies to the tax burden that the next generations will pay for? And finally, taking our money to destabilize our energy infrastructure and picking winners and losers is not free enterprise. So I employ you to represent the citizens of Sedgwick County and not these NGOs and these big corporate wind and solar farms. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Amy, appreciate it. Next up, Martin Tinker. And then after that is Renee DeSart. Hey, Martin.
Hi there. Thank you for your time. My name is Martin Tinker, 124 North Longford Court. Lifetime resident in Wichita, local business owner. I want to come here to support the continued moratorium on this and other industrial solar projects. I do so over concern about physical harm, environmental damage, as well as the continued deterioration, deterioration of personal property rights. Eminent domain becomes more and more prominent with each project of this type without care for the individual, the farmer, or their livelihoods. I have seen a number of these projects and, and watched progress or, or deterrence of progress within Kansas. I know that in southeast Kansas, the energy was wished to be moved out of, out of Kansas, not to serve us, but to serve others and to bring revenue in. I urge you all to read the entire agreement, ask them questions, take your time, and appreciate the time you give me here today to speak.
Thank you, Martin. Next up, Renee DeSart, and then Kent Rowe.
Hi, good morning. I'm Renee DeSart, 63, 64, North 119th Street West in Mays. I have been blessed to live in Kansas my entire life. I love our state. It's not a flyover state. When I look across the horizon, I don't think there's a prettier place to live, and I, I'm just so very grateful to live here. I look at the backdrop of the slides on the screen, and I think, would I like to look out my window at that solar farm, at my landscape? Would I like to drive down the road and look across the horizon and see that? I would not. On a side note, I'm a Sedgwick County Extension gardener volunteer. I work on the grounds at the Extension Office. We provide a big service, and just a plug, thank you for the, the, the support of the Extension Office and what we do. We support the public in education. We provide a lot of resources on that grounds work, I and a multitude of people that work there. We are in danger of losing all the landscaping that we've done and the education that we provide to the public because of the drought and the water restrictions. So I say that to say, when we put in a solar farm and it uses an exponential amount of water, that to me seems like a travesty to waste our water to do that when we have so many other valuable places that our water needs to be used. So thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, next up, Kent Rowe, and then Jennifer Connolly. Good morning, Kent.
Good morning. I am Kent Rowe, 3353 North 159th Street East. I was the judge of papers at the 51st Power Symposium at Wichita State University, and I've worked in the electrical engineering department since a very young age. I was 27 years old. When I came from refining and pipelining, I had two coworkers burned to death at the one in Arkansas City. So wind energy is very important. Wind energy has really made its impact. Wind energy has really made its impact. The harmonic distortions prohibiting an end to the moratorium on renewable electric generation needs to be, to once again achieve a more sinusoidal waveform by accepting the MAPC recommendation concerning utility scale rulemaking. The first harmonic distortion is urban areas of influence, which would allow a refinery to be constructed, but this allows solar farms to power them. Presently, solar assisted power feeds in processing units at Koch Industries and subsidiaries at several other petroleum refining industries. Number two, size restrictions falsely portray an under frequency relay, useless for anything else. Instead, these facilities do allow for sheep, goat, calf raising, native prairie spaces, and pollinator biodiversity. A contiguous rule would render these spaces difficult and impossible to implement. Number three harmonic distortion, an additional short circuit to a solar project in the one-half mile limit on unattached facilities, which serves no purpose except to create false tripping on a modern grid. Four, the 65% limit on project area represents further flattening waveform while creating impedance relay. Written notice of a project, number five, within two miles of a city should transmit through the conditional use application. Number seven harmonic distortion, requiring a 100-foot setback instead of a 40-foot setback is another waveform below objective values, creating high crest factor on overheated insulation. Number nine, visual screenings near dwellings such as berms or unreasonably high fencing is yet another fuse blowing derating of generation. In conclusion, there are nine harmonic distortions in need of rectifying in this rulemaking. These low order harmonics cannot be allowed to traverse Socratic reasoning and rational thought. Nothing heats me more on my stater core when I hear a transmission sourcing operator say, "We're not in Kansas anymore." End the Clean Energy Moratorium, accept MAPC's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kent. Next up, Jennifer Conley and then Bob Darter. Good morning.
I'm Jennifer Conley and I live at 3353 North 159th Street East. And I cannot overstate what Kent just told you. Obviously, you know that we are together, but I am not the expert in this field. I have listened to a lot of these farmers out there and they are suffering. Did you know that three and a half times more suicide rate is among farmers? Because farmers struggle every day to be able to make a living. And we are giving them an opportunity, just a very fragmented opportunity to make more money off their land. Do you know soybeans? Let me see, what does it say here? They make like 84 cents or something like that. Eighty, eighty-three dollars per acre. That's just, that's terrible. And soybeans do better because they don't typically need as many, much fertilizer. $194 an acre. And you put that together, if you do 50/50 crop rotation, that's less than $138. That's what's going for right now. Solar, I can't tell you what they'll do here. It varies from state to state. Texas has a lot of solar, lot more than we do. They only pay like $400 to $600 an acre per year. Areas that have higher land cost get a lot more money for that. Average nationwide is 1,000. That's almost like winning the lottery if you're a small farmer. And we're telling by overregulating that we cannot let these farmers have some kind of income to pass on to their families. We need to make sure that they have this way to make some kind of a living. Farmers, only about 37% of the farmers in this country make enough money where they can stay home and do farming themselves. Everybody else has to have an outside job. Can we help our farmers? We say we support our farmers. When are we going to start doing it?
Very good. Thank you, Jennifer. Next up, Bob Darter and then Gene Fields. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. My name is Bob Darter and I live at 6525 West 93rd Street North. My comment is short and my wife and I would like to just say that we'd like to effectively ban the solar, continue that referendum. So we do, are involved in farming and I would appreciate if we have any other farmers that they could maybe counteract the previous speaker and give some other opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Gene Fields. And then Mark, I'm going to try my best here. I think I'm reading Spirit? Spearorth?
Yeah, I'm Gene Fields. I live at 6728 North 135th West College. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for all the effort you've put in the last couple of years over this. It's really a big, complex program and I think it's worth the effort. You know, I reviewed the Berkeley, those guys, what they did and they really touched on a lot of the things that we are concerned about as citizens and thought they did a real good job there, you know? And I believe it's really important to create, and they spell that out in part of their thing, is create, you know, regulations that are clear and concise. It protects the county, it protects the citizens, it protects the developers, it protects everybody. So I think it's important to focus on that. And I took a trip, I took a little road trip and I went down to Barbara County where there's a large installation going in down there, very similar to what they've talked about Northwest Wichita, I believe. The interesting thing about that, Barbara County is about 1,100 square miles. Sedgwick County is about 1,000 square miles, okay? Barbara County has a population of less than 5,000 people. Sedgwick County has 500,000 people. Very, very different appearance. That installation down there, there's not a city within two miles or three miles, several miles away. And there's only three or four homes that are close to it and two of those are quite a ways away. So I think that's a really good, it's just a good visual to think about. Sedgwick County is as populated as we are. We have to be a lot more careful about installing these things, the impact it has. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Mark, if you can help me on your last name, I'd be grateful. And then Walt Chaplin.
Okay. I'm Mark Spearorth. I live at 6455 North 151st Street West. And I'm here because I just, I feel like that all the time, you know, our taxes just keep escalating and escalating and escalating. And our landowner rights just keep getting stripped away from us. You know, it's, we can do this, we can do this. And for the cities to be able to just keep extending out their interests, you know, out farther and farther away from town, when there's no way they'll ever reach these growth limits, is just, you know, unfathomable. If, I feel like, you know, if they, if they feel that they should have control over that land, they should be paying for that land or own the land. And as far as solar, I don't understand why we can put in, you know, five acres, 10 acres of solar panels and we put a big, you know, 1,300 acres of solar panels, why it's a problem? If you put in five acres, why are we allowing five acres? So we're okay with a little bit of a contamination? If they're concerned about contamination? I don't understand. It's just like, why? You know, if a little thing is going to hurt us, then why are we doing anything? It's just crazy. It's just like life, you know? So it just is unfathomable that, you know, why they think that this is going to be a problem. There's so many things, you know? We have homeowners, ground gets contaminated by homeowners. Ground gets contaminated by commercial projects and industrial projects. You know, if you don't believe, you know, when you sign that contract, you believe that person that's signing that contract is going to take care of the ground, that they're going to take control of water usage, water rights and everything. So, you know, we have to believe in the things that we do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Next up, Mr. Walt Chaplin. And then Mitch Lucas.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Yourself? Walt Chaplin at 3165 North Porter in Wichita, Kansas. I come back to a major concept. You've got to make it real, but compared to what? We throw out a lot of terms here that this is best practices, but your planning commission did a wonderful job of itemizing in a list of other communities, 16 of them, and only four had any areas of influence listed. The rest, including Sedgwick County, had none. Now, as some of you know, I was elected president of the Solar Manufacturers Association in Colorado. We took that industry from zero to 3,000 employees and $2 billion in sales in five years. That industry in Colorado right now is fourth in the nation. They have over 7,000 employees and billions of dollars of investment in solar. Florida has the third highest in this United States, but we're 44th in Kansas. We have as much sun as Florida. We have as much opportunity to make revenue and electricity off of the sun as Florida, but we're blowing it. We're micromanaging. The recommendations that Berkeley provided to you, I've analyzed and gone back and talked to those people in Charlotte, Virginia, and Grayson, Virginia. Those two communities have 15,000 and 11,000 residents only. They're tiny little areas in hilly, mountainous areas that are forested. It's nowhere compared to Sedgwick County at all. Johnson County doesn't have a solar collector system. Neither of those two counties in Virginia have either. In fact, Grayson doesn't even have an application, let alone a project under consideration. So we're taking ideas from folks who are talking about something that has no relevance to actually looking at projects where they are actually installed. And I've provided you with information, a whole list of things about other projects across the country where they in fact have best practices. And those best practices do not include these limitations, like using 65% of your land, like two-mile setbacks, like saying you've got to have fencing. What are we trying to hide? This is like the folks back when the idle bill first came out, they said, "Well, you've got to have a blanket and throw it over your car so you don't spook the horse that's coming down the road." This is the same kind of deal. We don't want to see collectors. We see oil wells, we see oil storage tanks, we see the Colwich ethanol plant. My God, folks, we're not putting berms around those. We're not telling people, "You can't see them, we want to keep them out of sight." For what purpose? What's the purpose? You know, as a Republican, I say, "My God, let's not micromanage stuff. Let's not overregulate our industries to the point we can't actually function." We need electricity for this county. We need it for our citizens, for our businesses, for our future. We can't shoot ourselves in the foot and think this is going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Walt. Next up, Mr. Mitch Lucas and then I believe it's, I believe it's Mark Byrd.
Thanks for the platform, as always, commissioners. Really appreciate the opportunity to address you and the public today. My name is Mitch Lucas. I am a project developer with Invenergy. We build energy projects across the country, the state of Kansas. I do a lot of work here in Sedgwick County. We've got an office in Wichita at 3510 North Ridge Road. I just, you know, I wanted to say first off, you know, this is the kind of, we're coming to the end of the road of an 11-month process and I just want to express my gratitude to Scott and his team at MAPD, the APC, MAPC, the Board of County Commissioners for all your work, the Berkeley Group, all your work throughout this process. I know there were a lot of questions from the commissioners about some specific items in those alternative regulations. I'd be happy to give my perspective on those at the end. I want to be respectful of your time, of course, but some points I wanted to make. You know, I'm here today on behalf of our, our local landowner partners here in Sedgwick County. You know, these, some of our landowners have been participating in Invenergy projects in the county for five years now. So these are some of the first folks to, to commit to helping to shepherd this, this new technology, this energy source into the county. And they've been at the forefront. You know, our first landowner signed up with us in 2019, you know, shortly after Sedgwick County passed their initial solar regs. These folks, their property that they own is a stone's throw from the Gordon Evans Power Plant between Colwich and Mays. If anybody's driven past on 53rd Street there, you see the power plant, you see all the transmission lines, the tremendous electrical substation infrastructure that's out there. So, you know, our landowners thought that this is, based on the regs that Sedgwick County came out with in 2019, that this is a great location for solar and that it's based on the regs the county passed, it would be okay to host solar and that it might even be, it probably would be encouraged on their land. You know, our landowners are excited about the benefits to the community that utility scale solar can bring, you know, tremendous millions of dollars in new public revenue for local schools, for the county, good paying operations and maintenance jobs, an economic boom associated with the construction periods of these projects. And, you know, of course, they're, they're excited about what that could mean to them and their family. You know, these, some of these folks have been on their land since the 1800s and projects like this is a way for them to, to keep their land in family hands for years to come. So I just wanted to thank them. You know, they've been showing up consistently over the past 11 months to voice their opinion, stand up for their rights. And I know something I've learned about farming is you don't have a lot of downtime. So they're, they're finding time in their day that they, that they don't have to show up. So thanks to those folks. Going, going way over here, but I think, you know, just generally, we've, we've reviewed the list of alternative regs. We've got a lot of concerns. I'd happy to be dive into those. And I know that this process is about building the best regs for Sedgwick County that we can, but I just have to let the commission, the public know that, you know, there are specific, you know, project concerns related to these regulations. You know, there's several provisions in that alternative list that are, you know, listed as unwavable, that if any one were passed, you know, it would terminate the project that we're working on, that our landowners have committed to participate in. It would wipe away a $200 million plus investment without even the chance for, for the details of that project to be publicized, reviewed, debated during the permitting process, as is typical. So I just, you know, we're urging the board to move forward with the recommendations that APC and MAPC voted overwhelmingly to recommend earlier this year. If you can't do that and you feel that, that we need to remake the regs with some or all of these alternative proposals, I would ask that, that we make the most restrictive limitations at, at the very least, preserve the option for a waiver. And if we can't do that, we'd request that our project be grandfathered through under the 2019 regulations. It would be impossible for us to comply with, with some of these alternative provisions. And we just, we think it wouldn't be fair to our landowners if their project didn't at least get the chance, you know, for, for the details to be publicized through the permitting process and, you know, considered on its merits. If the project's not, not the right fit for Sedgwick County, or, you know, answering that question would be best adjudicated during the conditional use permitting process. So we, we're just urging you, please don't legislate our project out of existence today. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mitch. I do have two quick questions.
Sure.
Respect to time, they're going to be quick. Minimum viability for a company like yours doing a project like what you plan to put an application in for? What's the minimum acreage that allows for viability? There's a lot of confusion around this.
So if you look at the 14-state Southwest Power Pool, anybody can go online and look up the projects, the interconnection requests to this grid that are being proposed. Our project is- Our project is one of the smallest utility-scale projects in the 14-state Southwest Power Pool. It's around 100 megawatts. We think we need, you know, around 750 acres of solar panels in order to build that. And, and that is for one of the smallest utility-scale solar projects in, in this, this part of the country.
Mitch, question for clarity, is that a ratio of 750 acres per 100 megawatts, is that an industry standard ratio, or?
It's going to be plus or minus, depending on the area that you're working in, what kind of characteristics are, are out in the land.
Okay. Last question. You, I've heard reference to $200 million investment. That's a big number. There's a 10-year tax abatement from the state on this project.
Yep.
And all solar projects of this caliber, 10 years of tax. Can you help me understand that $200 million investment? Can you, can you give me some detail on what that looks like?
So, that, when I talk about a $200 million investment, that's the amount of capital that goes into, you know, the development, the construction of a project like this. And you're absolutely right that, that wind and solar both have a 10-year property tax abatement by state statute in Kansas. It is standard, and every renewable project in the state has this. The developer, it's standard to negotiate what's called a contribution agreement with the county. And, and through that contribution agreement, that covers the first 10 years where property taxes are abated, some amount of money to be negotiated between the developer and the county. Annual payments would be made for the first 10 years before property taxes kick in in year 11. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm just trying to get to that $200 million. It's a big number.
Absolutely. And when we talk about order of magnitude for contribution payments for a project of this size, just based on precedent in the state, and there's not a lot, because there's not, not a lot of utility-scale solar yet, it would be, you know, several million dollars total, maybe $5 million, plus or minus, you know, whatever's negotiated, total over that first 10 years.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mitch, you and I have talked a lot of times, okay? And I appreciate all of the discussions that we've had up to this point. And I've made it clear to you every time we've talked that, that I'm not anti-solar. I wouldn't be at this position, point if we'd have just banned solar when we banned wind. And we didn't do that, because I think that there's a place in Sedgwick County for solar, and I've told you that a number of times. It's just that we have to determine where is the right place in there, in Sedgwick County. And that's my biggest concern as we move forward. So, there are actually hundreds of thousands of acres still available, and what we're looking at is, is not one project today. We're looking at what is best for Sedgwick County. This is, this is not a decision for the project that you're speaking about. This is a decision for Sedgwick County overall, what is best for Sedgwick County. So, I hope everyone understands that, that I do believe that we have a place for solar. I just want to make sure that we do it right. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of clarifications. So, you said $5 million, and you had a, you said contribution payment. What do you mean by that?
Some folks also call it a pilot payment, payment in lieu of taxes. So, it's a, it's an annual payment that, that the project makes, in most cases to the county, whoever the, the governing body is where the project's built. And that's, that comes in the formative agreement that is typically negotiated either before, in parallel with, or after the permitting process.
So, I don't want to, I don't want to get too deep into your particular project, because today's about the regulations. It's not about your project.
Sure.
And I hate to say, but, but without, without considering your project at all, and that's really what I'm trying to do today, that deference to your project in any way. We're trying to establish what's right for Sedgwick, Sedgwick County. And I, and I'm sorry that there may be some financial exposure to your company, but you knew that these regulations were not in place. So, I would, I would caution any actual projects to, to understand there's risk by investing anything before regulations are in place. That's not going to change a thing we do here. Our regulations are going to do what they're going to do. And if there's losses by anybody out there that has an application in process, that's just the consequences of, of taking on those risks ahead of time. So, that's not going to change what we do here today. And I, I think Kirk's, looks like he wants to say, say something, but I, I have one other comment. Go ahead. Let's see if he has a.
Thank you. Kirk Spence, Sedgwick County Councilor. Just a couple of comments that came up that I, I would like to briefly address. This discussion of a pilot agreement or things of that nature, some sort of compensation in lieu of taxes. It would be my recommendation, considering that we are, we are a county that does have zoning regulations, that that not be considered in general as part of the analysis. There would be that. And second, I would, I would echo the comments of Commissioner Dennis that this is legislative action, this is looking at the county as a whole, and that any consideration of individual projects should be separate from this, and those would actually carry different levels of analysis. Those individual projects or individual sites would actually constitute quasi-judicial considerations. And so, there does need to be a clear delineation in this situation, and I think that has been established by the board, but I would just reiterate that.
Kirk, while you're still there, I, I just don't know if it's appropriate to ask staff or ask one of the people that might know the answer to the question. There was a comment earlier by one of the previous conferees regarding subsidies from the government. Not that it matters to me, but I'd like to understand if there are subsidies from, I'm a taxpayer too. If that's the motivation for solar farms, I'd like to have that, the details of that truth established, whether there are in fact subsidies or there are not subsidies, and, and what are the motivations for people to install these farms?
And I'm looking at Michael, I believe he might have a better answer than I do, because I don't have any answer. So, thank you.
You know, certainly not my area of expertise, the market side of it, but I, I would tell you, it's my understanding that there, there are certainly federal subsidies associated with projects and panels and the like. At least in Virginia, I can tell you, again, I alluded to this, there's a mandate, and there are tax abatements with respect to that initial capital expenditure investment, and how localities can tax that. So, so there are multiple ways that these are incentivized, and it seems in, in Kansas, there's the 10-year tax exemption as well. So, there's a variety of ways that the costs of these projects are going down, and, and that's what we've seen, and we allude to that in our report, and at least in one of the factors why we were seeing more of these projects nationally, because there are policies or incentives for solar projects. And, and I think, off the top of my head, I can't recall, but over the last five years at least, I, I think growth in solar as a, as a electric generating utility has outpaced other sources significantly, so.
And I, and, and again, since you're the expert, Mr. Berkeley, or Berkeley Group, I, I probably have a couple more questions for you at, at the end of all the conferences today.
Sure, absolutely.
I just didn't know who I should ask the question to, so, since we have Mr. Mitch Lucas at the table, I would like to have him potentially answer the question, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'd love to offer.
And Kirk, if he goes in a direction that's not allowed, please just, just let us know.
I, yeah, would love to offer a data point there. So, I, anybody can, can search this online, the term "levelized cost of energy." And there's a firm called Lazard that publishes updated figures, I think, every year. And you can, in this analysis, you can see the, the cost of generation of, you know, all the different generation sources available in the U.S., so wind, solar, offshore wind, coal, natural gas, and, and what this analysis, the high-level takeaway, and they, they provide numbers for renewables that are with the subsidies, but also if you stripped the subsidies away. And I think the key takeaway that is pretty amazing is that renewables, even without the federal subsidies, are, building new renewables is cost-competitive to generate electricity with existing thermal resources. So, it, it is cost-neutral to build a new solar facility and generate electricity as it is to, to continue to operate and fix and maintain an existing coal plant. So, I think that's pretty tremendous. And I, I think the federal subsidies on top of that is just an incentive to, to build these resources quicker, as it is, as federal subsidies work for pretty much any other industry that they're applied to. But I, I think that's the key takeaway for me. Solar especially has become, the cost to build it has gone down dramatically over the past 10 to 15 years, and it's, it's one of the most cost-effective ways to generate electricity in 2024.
Okay. So, a lot of questions for you, sir.
Okay. Mitch, thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Next up, I have a, I believe it's a Mark Byrd. Sorry, I'm not able to. And then after that is Andy Albert. Who I don't see. No, he's on his way. And if Andy is not here, then Dennis Hetke is the last.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Brady. So, my handwriting, I wrote my name without my readers on, so it's my fault, not yours. I apologize for that. Again, Mark Brady, I'm an attorney with the Paulsonelli Law Firm. I, I do work with the Invenergy team. I'm not going to talk about that project in particular. I know that's, that's been discussed and isn't really part of the conversation yet today. I don't have any prepared remarks. I've just put my name down in case there are any questions that I was, you know, more aptly in a position to, to respond to. But I do certainly want to thank staff. We've been working with them for, for years now. The, you know, obviously the Board of County Commissioners, MAPC, the consultants have all done, I think, a significant and, and, and legal team, had done a great job in pulling together these recommendations, recommendations from the MAPC, the Advanced Plan Committee, tremendous stakeholder engagement, town halls. Lots of information went into the original recommendation that the MAC made, and then having it further vetted by the Berkeley Group, all with the recommendation to, to kind of maintain the ability to review these applications through the CUP process, which I think is very, very important. So, your hands aren't tied, there aren't bans, and there aren't limitations that would prevent projects from at least being vetted and considered by, by, by the MAPC staff and obviously the county commission. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Next up, Andy Albert. I don't see Andy, so Dennis Hetke. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and have a very interesting hearing. I'm going to unfold a couple things here before I get underway, but just bear with me, please. And since we don't have slides that we can use, I'm going to bring some graphics out that are, hopefully you can see a little bit of the picture that I'm trying to present. Well, okay. First of all, I deeply appreciate the amount of time that you all have put into this research in very complex matter. I don't think that can be understated in, in terms of where this could go, what you've already accomplished. The Berkeley Group's research has been added to this recently, and there are just a lot of moving parts. One of the conclusions that the Berkeley Group reached was that, that you all have done an exhaustive amount of study and, and have, you know, generated a, a good database to review where this could go. I would submit that I think that you're seeing some evidence of, of, you know, background noise, not, I should, let me rephrase that, not background noise, a lot of disparate opinions. And, and so, I think that, you know, the, the, at the end of the day, you all are very dedicated to doing what's right for Sedgwick County, Kansas. Not just the city of Wichita, but you've got 20 or so municipalities that are also potentially engaged here. And so, I'll, there's, in all of the research that I've done, and the, the most recent documents have been presented and developed by Berkeley and so forth, there's one word that I can't find anywhere in any of the documents, and it's a four-letter word, but it's not vulgar, and, and it is spelled H-A-I-L, hail. And, and I find it interesting that it is absent from any of the discussions, any of the considerations that we have here. And so, as you all are very well aware, Sedgwick County does have periodic hailstorms, and some of them can be pretty damaging. And so, I want to give you some statistics here. In the last 20 years, we've had 242 hail reports in Sedgwick County, and the reports are based on large enough hail to have real damage. And the largest hailstones that have been recorded in the, the last 13 years are four and a quarter inches in diameter, and that hurts. That can hurt anybody, anything that gets in his path. So, I have a map here I want to show you that relates to what I just said, but all these red dots are strikes in our area. That's Sedgwick County and, and around our territory where we have had significant damage reported in the last 20 years. I want to give you a little bit broader scope, because we're not the only area in the country that also has this challenge of dealing with hailstorms, and what they can do to property values and all kinds of other things that are very interesting to us. So, here's a map of the United States, and that red zone you see in the middle there is where the highest risk for hailstorms to occur exists in this United States of America. I think you can all kind of see, there's a trend there. That little red trend certainly includes Sedgwick County. And, and so, to the extent that that matters, I just wanted you to be aware of that fact.
Mr. Hetke, I hate to interrupt, but we had a, we had a three-minute clock that expired. I'm happy to give you a little bit more time, but if we can.
Okay. I'll try to wrap up here in a couple minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? There are two storms in the last year that have occurred in two states that surround us, Nebraska to the north and Texas to the south. Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, had a hailstorm that devastated a solar installation in that city. They did have insurance. The, the state of Nebraska owns the facility, not Scotts Bluff, but they did have insurance, and they've rebuilt it. But the one thing that you can't see after the damage that was incurred, what, what comes with hail, I would say is another four-letter word called rain, R-A-I-N. And so, when you have a damaged solar panel that has multiple potential toxic materials within them that get damaged and have the tendency then to, to cause a lot of toxicity to be entered into groundwater, then that's a risk that's just not been considered here. And so, I will try to fast forward to the end here. Those toxic materials, lead, cadmium, cadmium telluride, and some others are very, very regulated by the United States government, because they're, they're carcinogens, and they, they bring very undesirable effects. So, we have this thing in Sedgwick County called the ecospits, water aquifer, that we, we want to protect at all costs. And so, the toxicity that can come out of a solar panel can get into the groundwater and cause damage that is unseen, but has long-term consequences that are very significant. So, I'm going to stop there to just say that I want you to be aware that we haven't really talked about that in any of the reports, and I think that it does matter, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next up, Mr. Mark Burkham. Next up, Mr. Mark Burkamp.
Sorry for the overtime.
You're fine, sir. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mr. Burkamp, sir? Good morning.
Thank you.
Oh, it's still good morning, yeah. We still got a little bit of time.
A few more minutes. Mark Burkamp, I'm a farmer. We farm in southwest Sedgwick County in Commissioner Lopez's district. And I just want to make a few comments in regards to the farming. It cycles up and down, so regardless of whatever decision gets made, it's, you know, farmers are going to survive, my grandparents and, you know, everyone else has, you know, been there and done that. But as far as the grocery prices, it always kind of bothers me because it really has such a small part to do with what, you know, what price we get, how much money we make. So, and there's a surplus. There's so much corn, so much beans, a lot of carryover. So, it's really, we don't, it's not a food production issue, it's just a distribution. There are hungry people and things like that. But in regards to your decision here, some of the, some of the things, like in the urban growth area, I just want to kind of address that. I appreciate having rules and the fact, if it's like a hard rule that cannot be adjusted, that's one thing. Personally, we're in the Wichita urban growth area, but I grew up looking at chemical plants and grain elevators, transmission lines, power transmission plants, and I had no issue with it, right? It's just kind of what I did. So, but if you have a rule that completely outlaws it, there's no room for, you know, maybe it's not right in this part of the county, but maybe it's right here. And we've been approached by multiple solar companies over the last five years, and I think it has to have something to do with the fact that we're close to the largest power consumer in the whole entire region, right? So, they want to be close to large power users, they want to be close to transmission lines. We also happen to be in an urban growth area, but I'm probably never going to have houses in my neck of the woods, just because of where we are. So, to just have rules that can't be at least looked at later, you know, maybe it makes sense, possibly, to at least have some rooms, you know, like a conditional use permit, or I don't know the exact rules of how everything works, but to just outlaw, you know, the size, the scope, if you're in an urban growth area, and not have any room for discussion in the future, I just would like that to, you know, be taken into consideration because there are bad places to place it and there are good places, but to just outlaw kind of takes away, you know, everything. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good perspective. Thank you, Mark. Mr. Andrew Nave.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Nave with the Greater Wichita Partnership. Speaking, thank you very much for the deliberation and thoughtful consideration of this issue over many weeks and months. I can speak to, as your economic development representative for Sedgwick County at the partnership, I think I can speak to a different perspective on the need to balance certainly wise and careful stewardship of environmental resources, but also stewardship of property tax base and growth of the community. And I know that we have shared with you all many, many times before, as your economic development voice, the need for the ability to preserve growth areas so that we can add tax base and job creation across Sedgwick County. We are so appreciative of the engaged support of not only you all, Commissioners, but certainly your staff with our team as we try to recruit industry all across the region, but we've had quite a bit of success in the growing parts of the county. And so, having the ability to look at carefully and thoughtfully where we don't quickly or easily dismiss the needs for communities and urban growth areas to continue to thrive and to grow and add to tax base is a really important thing for economic development. We have a large employment base in this county, we have a large tax base, but that needs to continue. And that needs to continue for not just today, but for future generations. And so, your guys' thoughtful consideration of this policy and balancing those needs, I think, is really important, and the ability to preserve the future economic growth and the tax base potential and looking at zones of the county that are for highest and best use when it comes to development. All of those are hard to do, all of that is subjective to some degree, and so, appreciate the thoughtful approach that you all have taken in drafting this policy, and we're certainly happy to stand and continue to provide support from an economic development lens. Thank you very much. Something we're heavily considering, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrew, thank you. As you talk to the cities that are growing, and we have the fastest-growing city in the state of Kansas, we've got the second-fastest-growing city in the state of Kansas, we've got industrial districts out there that are being developed, what are you hearing from the cities as far as preserving their ability to keep growing and keep adding?
Yeah, we regularly engage with cities. Our organization meets on a quarterly basis with city managers and economic development leaders from cities and not just Sedgwick County, but across the region. And we regularly hear from them that the ability for them to provide additional areas for industrial parks or business parks or for areas of job creation and growth are paramount. There are so many limiting factors when it comes to geography and topography and to just the ability of acquiring land. All of those challenges when it comes to real estate, land use, and development are a challenge for many of our cities, and our cities need the ability to have growth and to be able to add tax base. And so, most of the cities that we're talking to are desiring to grow and desiring to add new space because our office is the single point of contact for those new inquiries, those new potential opportunities for companies that want to invest in South Central Kansas and in Sedgwick County. Quite frankly, sir, we have more of those opportunities than we can really respond to with ready-to-go sites and ready-to-go places where we can get job creation and tax base formed. And so, we have that push-pull with those city officials that they don't have the requisite amount of sites that they need to be able to pursue those opportunities.
As we look forward, I've heard from our appraiser that we need up to 40,000 different homes developed in the future. Is that, and is that analysis accurate, or it sounds like an awful lot?
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak into the specifics of what your appraiser has estimated there. I can just tell you anecdotally from what we see in talking to employers, there's absolutely a stark need for more housing of a wide variety of types, price levels, and just types of housing. And so, that, if I were to hear that number, it would not surprise me that that would be an accurate number.
You're working a number of projects right now. I know in Tegra we're working, we're getting Charlotte Pipe building. How many new employees do you project just from some of the things that you're working?
I would have to go back and look at our projections from the job creation of the projects we've announced over the last couple of years, but it's several thousand. Because keep in mind, sir, when we announce, when we help a company, the Greater Wichita Partnership doesn't create any jobs. It's these private sector companies that are doing all the job creation. Oftentimes, when they make these announcements, they're projecting not the jobs they're going to hire that next month or even that first year, but many times multiple years. And so, many of the projects, Charlotte Pipe would be a good example, while they're still under construction right now, they're going to be hiring well over 100 people over a series of years. And many of our projects are like that. GAF is a big employer that's going up into Harvey County. They're hiring over a four-year period. So, we'll have several thousand new jobs coming into Sedgwick County and the broader region over the next several years.
One other area that we're kind of deficient in is our industrial areas where people can have access to rail, to roads, and so forth. How many of those are available right now in Sedgwick County that we could start going out and advertising we've got industrial area?
We've got a number of sites, industrial zoned or land use planned industrial sites in Sedgwick County. The issue that my office sees, sir, is that we have a very few number of large sites. And in modern manufacturing and in modern economic development, the scale of projects has gone up considerably. And that's not always in an employment standpoint. That doesn't mean that every project is like Integra's with, you know, many thousands of jobs. Most of them, quite frankly, are not. Like, most of them are like Charlotte Pipe with just more than 100. But the amount of investment has gone from, when I started in my career 20 years ago, a big project was 50 to $100 million investment by a company into a community. Now, it's not uncommon to have that be a billion dollars or more. My office is working one project, it's a long shot to get, that we're competing against many states, it's a $4 billion project, just to give you the scale of what that looks like. So, because of that investment is so large, the land that's needed is also large. Many of them need rail access. We don't have very many sites in Sedgwick County that have direct rail access. We've got great rail providers, but we have many ready-to-go rail-served sites. We don't have that many large sites close to highways, close to infrastructure, that have the requisite amount of water and sewer and electric. We're working on that. Communities are working on that. This body is working on that, and the private sector is working on that. But the scale, there's this wave of reindustrialization that's kind of swept across America because of some of the new industries, EV batteries, kind of reshoring, COVID effect has swung the amount of scale of projects in a considerable way, and we just don't have the sites right now to respond to most of them.
Well, I'm trying to get the vision of what Sedgwick County is going to look like in 25, 35, 45, 50 years from now. And it's difficult for me to think about where that's at. You've probably got a better idea of what it's going to look like. Let me just give you a quick example, and then you can kind of answer. My wife and I moved to Sedgwick County in 1997. When we got off of K-96 and drove down Ridge Road, it was a little narrow two-lane road with nothing on either side, all the way from K-96 all the way to 21st Street. When we came in 1997 and we drove down Maze Road, there was nothing out there around 21st Street on up to Maze. There's a large number of areas in Sedgwick County that I didn't dream of would be like they are today 25 years ago, and yet the decisions we're looking at today are going to impact this county for 25 to 50 years in the future. So, what kind of vision do you have on growth around urban areas?
Well, I'm an economic developer, sir, so my goal is growth. My goal is to add to the tax base of this community. That's part of the reason what attracted my wife and I, we've only been here the last eight years, sir, but we've seen phenomenal growth across Sedgwick County in just in the last eight years, and I would hope that that only continues. We need to continue to grow, we need to continue to thrive. If we don't, if, my in-laws live in a small community in rural Kansas where there isn't a lot of growth. In fact, there's the opposite way, there's depopulation in that area. And so, that's not an issue necessarily for Sedgwick County or for this part of the state, but we need to continue to move forward, we need to continue to grow. I would hope that our growth in 20, 30, 50 years, like you've described, Commissioner, would be balanced, for sure, but I would hope that we have areas of economic opportunity where people can have good family-supporting jobs that add to the tax base. I think those are all good things, and I would hope that I live in this county in 20, 40, 50 years and we see that come to fruition.
Andrew, thanks for being here. That's my biggest concern, I just expressed, is what is our growth going to look like in 25, 50 years from now, and what impact can certain areas have? And I'm not talking about the entire county, I'm talking about certain areas of the county. That's why I think there's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of acres available out there that are not going to impact the vision that we have for the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, you mentioned some jobs a minute ago in some of the surrounding counties. Those are unrelated to solar farms, is that correct?
Meaning this-
Unrelated, you're not related to solar-
Developments themselves?
Correct.
Yes, sir, they're primarily manufacturing, but across a wide variety of industries.
I want to make sure I understood that. Second of all, as GWP takes, looks, look at this, I mean, we've heard from a previous person today, there's a water consumption aspect, we just talked about tax base, I've heard that there's a bait for 10 years, we don't know what happens after that, maybe, I'd like to understand what their tax revenue looks like after the 10 years. I understand there's construction jobs to put the solar farm in place, but once it's in operation, the number of jobs that are in place, despite my previous conference had 3,000 to 7,000 jobs in another state, I don't know how, how many jobs are actually and are related to operation of a solar farm. Seems like it'd be very few, though, because it's essentially a static infrastructure, maybe some repairs and some maintenance around the solar panels, but generally, there's not a lot of jobs there. And in terms of the electric rates, not, I don't know how electric rates would change, if at all. So, again, I'm not sure what GWP would see that there's a benefit necessarily. If there's no jobs, there's no tax base, there's no reduction in electric, electric costs, or maybe some consumption with water, we just heard a previous conference about environmental risk. GWP, I guess, I would just, I'd like to understand what it is about this that they would actually be a proponent. There seems like there are a lot of negatives here. I'm not sure, you said you don't have a formal position on this, but I'm just trying to understand from your perspective, it seems like there's a lot of negatives here, I don't know what the positives are.
Sure. Surely, I can speak to that, sir. And I apologize, I'm not ready to speak to the specifics of the agenda item today, just because I, I apologize, I haven't gone through it in depth, and our executive leadership hasn't signed off as of this morning. I would refer you back to, we provided a letter of support, or a letter of, I guess, opposition some weeks ago, raising those very concerns, and the concerns were about protecting the tax base of the community. So, without going in detail of this particular policy and the changes that you've made over the last several weeks, I would refer back to that. From an economic development standpoint, we want to see the ability of retaining and maintaining property for tax base where it makes sense. And again, that's y'all's job as our elected leaders to see where that makes sense, but we absolutely want to see the ability to continue to add to the tax base.
Chairman, I just want to say, is this the last conference today?
This is, yes.
I don't have any other questions for this one. If there's no other questions for any of the conferences, I'd recommend you close the public hearing.
Okay. Oh, I thought Faith, you've signed up for the-
I was going to say, I would speak later.
Okay. Certainly okay with that, yes. This is the later. Okay. Welcome back, yes, of course. Faith Martin-
Six white South jury, I live in Wichita, District 5, and I want to say, first of all, thank you to staff. I don't claim to know everything about planning, but four years ago, I joined a board where we do a lot of planning, and Scott's team and office have educated us a lot on why conditional use permits are so important. Politically, I believe that we shouldn't be banning things without allowing the public and governance to weigh in, and that's why I love conditional use permits, because we can set boundaries, and then each case can be looked at individually to find out if the, and the public can weigh in, local government can weigh in and decide, is this a good fit? And we have found conditional use permits really meets a lot of needs. And again, I just want to thank staff and Berkeley Group for all of the, mostly staff, for all of the input that public has had over the last seven-ish months on this issue. And I would just absolutely be in favor of passing this and using that conditional use permit process as a way for the public, if they don't agree, if they think it's too close, and local government to ensure those regulations are being met. Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. Okay, I believe that's the last individual that had signed up to speak to public comment. So, I'll officially close public comment and bring it back to the bench for a motion. One second, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Before we start discussing this and try and work it out, I need to know if Commissioner Howell is going to ask for a deferral. And if he is, then we need to wait till next week to go through all of the arguments one way or the other, or any recommendations for votes. I need to know what our next steps are.
Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for Michael Zainer, thank you. And then after that, I would be willing to make a motion for a deferral to take action next Wednesday would be my, would be my preference, but I'll be glad to make that motion in just a moment. He's had a couple of quick questions, is all, if that's okay, Chairman.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you, Michael, for being here again.
Yes, sir.
You've heard a lot of information. I'd like to just clarify a couple of points.
Sure.
Environmental risk, hail, please explain, is there a concern that we have, or yes or no?
You know, not my area of expertise, but based on our work, we find, have found no research to suggest, and we, I think, allude to this in our report, that there's a concern with leaching of materials from damaged panels. Out of an abundance of caution, we usually advise communities, because of concerns like that, to impose through regulations or condition on the project that damaged panels have to be stored on-site, can't be stored in areas that they're going to get wet, contribute to groundwater concern, and they have to be removed from the facility and site in a reasonable amount of time. But again, the research that we're aware of does not suggest that that should be a point of concern. We understand that, yes, in many panels, there are hazardous materials, but the way that they're encapsulated within those panels, hail damage, breakage would not contribute to those materials leaching out.
So, to be clear, there are hazardous materials in them, however, this does require a baseline water study and a re-study, if you will, every five years. And if they find there's groundwater contamination that could be potentially from the solar panels, then there's going to be some type of remediation will be, will be required. Can you please explain the remediation part of that?
I can't tell you exactly what the remediation requirements would be for the state of Kansas, but I think your staff may be better equipped to-
I am, I am a little curious, let's just, you know, play the game here, let's assume there's some, someone who has arguably some groundwater contamination from a solar panel, solar- Or how is this-
Yeah, my, you know, at least knowing what I know about the federal-level regulations, you know, the property owner would be responsible for that. And, you know, so there may be some contributed responsibility, liability of the property owner and the leaseholder, and presumably-
Harm in this case, if they're leasing their land out to the solar-
I don't know what type of provisions would be covered in any lease agreements.
Do they have to have some type of insurance to cover that type of situation, then?
That's one of the provisions that we include, is a requirement. In the alternative provisions, is included a liability insurance coverage.
Someone talked about water consumption. Is there, how is water consumed in these solar panels?
Washing panels.
Washing panels, so they have to use a lot of water to keep them clean?
Yes, sir.
So if there's a sprinkle of rain, and there's, on dusty roads around there, they get covered with dust, and you have to go out there and maintain them all?
Yes, sir.
That costs a lot of water, okay.
Yeah, and a lot of localities, or a lot of facilities will use pumper trucks to wash panels.
Can you validate the issue of, I understand there's construction jobs to put the farms in place, but once they're in operation, very few jobs at that point to maintain and operate these solar farms, is that correct?
That's my understanding, and I would tell you that a lot of the national firms that are developing facilities, they either have in-house contracting arms, or they're contracting to sub-con consultant contractors. We had one project, and this was a 600-megawatt facility, 400-megawatt battery energy storage, and it was a company based out of Colorado. They indicated that they would use a sub, contracting firm that they partner with, and I think they indicated during the construction period, they would hire approximately 10% local, you know, and that was, I believe, approximately nine employees local. And we understand that that's fairly common. Our perception is that, yes, there may be an influx of contracting staff to a locality, and that may have some economic contribution, but from, as in terms of an employment generator during the construction period, no, and, you know, one or two employees.
Yeah.
I will say, one, well, multiple localities in at least South Side, Virginia, there have been private entities, excavating companies, grading companies, lawn care maintenance companies, that have banded together in a business alliance, and they have very well-positioned themselves with a lot of the localities, a lot of the developers of facilities in those localities, to advocate for their services as part of those projects. You know, yet to be seen whether or not that's a big job creator. We don't anticipate that it is.
I don't know if you have an answer to this question, but there is, I know these are, someone said these are fenced projects. I am a little concerned about how do they manage the vegetation, if it's whether through herbicides or through goats? What is the, is this allowed, if it's herbicides, is it highly regulated? Is it, how much is it used? Does it get in the ground? I mean, is there anything in this that talks about how much can be used, and that, you know, the routine use of herbicides on land for long periods of time can be detrimental to the community?
Sure.
I'd like to understand how that-
Yeah, usually, we've addressed that through conditions, and some communities will impose conditions that mandate that it has to be EPA-certified use of herbicides only. Another locality has specifically not allowed for the use of herbicides. They only allow for organic treatment of weeds and the like.
But this regulation doesn't even talk about this, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, that may be something we want to talk about later on. And then I guess I'll just, last couple of things here, and I'll, you're an expert, and there was someone that spoke earlier-
Where these materials come from, the mining sources of these materials when we're reviewing projects, but we don't necessarily believe through our work that that's a valid reason for, to regulate land use. I would tell you, just as though, you know, we're advising here, we're reviewing solar as a land use, we wouldn't necessarily take that same perspective if someone was proposing to put a car dealership in and wondering where all the components that made up that vehicle came from, either. That's not something that we normally would look at when we're reviewing a land use. So that would be my response.
And I'll just rebut that. We know there's a lot of cars made in the USA, and we do know the cars are very recyclable as well. I don't know about these, again, wind generator, wind energy and generation windmills, if you want to call it that. They have a recycling problem. They're made of composite materials, and they're stacking up in landfills. They do not, they do not break down.
Yep.
And it seems like the environmental side of that, in terms of wild, the impact on wildlife and impact on recycling plan, it was just, it's really not what it should be. And so, again, I don't know how this has worked, but I can see there was a, there have been renewable energy farms of different kinds that have been abandoned in other communities that deal with the aftermath. I know there's a remediation plan within this. But ultimately, if these panels are damaged by hail, or if they are, is he commissioned, if these end up in a landfill, do they end up being recycled? I guess I just have concerns about the life cycle of these panels.
No, I can appreciate that, and I think we've addressed that in the report, and I believe that is addressed in the regulations, alternative and proposed regulations, in terms of requiring applicants to submit the materials, information with respect to what is incorporated within the project. But, you know, disposal of these materials after their useful life, they're hazardous materials, so they're subject to disposal at EPA-regulated facilities. And again, I think, yes, it is a factor, but again, it's not something that we would normally advise communities in terms of whether they do or don't want this land use in their community. Because that in and of itself is not a tangible, physical impact to land use.
All right. So I appreciate those answers. I deserve the right to call you this week and ask more questions, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Kirk may want to say something, and Chairman, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to defer in just a moment, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is just backing off of some of your questions for the Berkeley Group. Just, I just wanted to point out some specific provisions in the alternative set of proposed code changes, just that kind of touch upon this issue of environmental impacts, hail things of that nature. So first, in regards to the issue of hail, it may not be specifically referenced as hail damage, but within Section 6E, it would require that an applicant shall provide a plan for the collection, proper storage, and removal of damaged panels and components. The collection and/or storage location, the length of time stored prior to the removal, and the anticipated final disposition of the items shall be specified in the plan. So that's addressed there. Also, in terms of leaking into the ground and things of that nature, a lot of these regulations actually were already in place or were submitted as proposed by the MAPC and their recommendations themselves. But I would point out that one of the requirements that we already have is that the applicant shall submit environmental assessment to EPA standards that addresses the project's impact, if any, on wildlife, habitat, bird migration, the project's potential to cause bird and bat strikes in or death, officially listed flora and fauna and flood zones. So that's one component. And then another component within the actual testing, you mentioned it yourself, wherein they can test every five years for the groundwater. It goes a step further, and it allows, it allows environmental resources to reasonably request additional tests if it may arise. And a lot of that testing is focused on EPA standards themselves. And my understanding is Susan Erlin Wine is currently in the office, but that, broad brushstrokes.
Okay. Thank you, Kirk. Before you make your motion, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Since there's going to be a motion, there's a couple of things I want to point out. First of all, I appreciate the staff putting up the urban growth area map up on the screen. I know they couldn't answer my question about how many acres are available. Maybe you can answer it now.
Well, JR crunched some numbers. He's a little shy right now, but it was, it was just for, really, just for this area, right down in here, just in the southwest of the county, and it was well over 110,000 acres. So just to give you an approximate, you know, the map gives you a reference, and then-
Can you take your mask off? I have, I'm hard here.
So sorry. No, so JR crunched the numbers, and just for this area down in the southwest county, that's well over 110,000 acres, just in that area alone, just to give you some perspective.
110,000 in what area?
In the southwest, south of Chenee and to the west of Clearwater, and up south of Goddard.
Now, if you're talking about in that whole area, south of Chenee, I think you're out by an order of magnitude, because every one of those squares is 640 acres.
Yes, sir. JR Cox, Metropolitan Planning. I did a rough calculation, which is why I let Scott answer. Running a line, I'll just show you with my cursor, across here, up, over, down, over, and then this bank right here, bank of sections, that's going to be roughly just under approximately 110,000 acres, about 130.
But that's just in that one area?
That is correct, just this area, basically this area.
That doesn't include all of the white that's up on that map.
Oh, no, sir, no.
And what I'm saying is, that white area is what we're talking about for our regulations, to all of the white area.
Yes, sir. I just did a quick calculation in the kind of the largest bowl.
Okay. Well, anyway, I don't want to dwell on it, but I just wanted to point out, all of that white area is permitted if you adopt the alternate regulations. So let me say a couple of other things real quick before defer it. First of all, I do want to thank a lot of people. Michael, thank you for being here and all the work you've done on this. Our planning staff has worked diligently on this. Our legal staff has done great work on it. So there's a lot of people that have spent countless hours. Matter of fact, we didn't get some of these regulations until late last week, and they worked through the weekend, well, actually, they had it before the weekend. They worked all week trying to get this out to us so that it was available by Friday of last week, because that's when our agenda was published. So that was an eight-to-five work in order to be able to get that much done. I thank everyone that's been involved in this every step of the way. The only concern I have on the deferral, and I need to ask legal, because from what I understand is that today is the day we'd have to do something on the MAPC recommendations. Periodically, we have to bring it back, and do we have to also defer the MAPC recommendations?
No, that's technically what's before you today. So a deferral is permissible, I believe Commissioner Howell mentioned a week, deferral's permissible in this situation. I don't have any qualms about any actions that would need to be taken.
Okay, do we have to set a date, then, certain on that deferral?
It would have to be a date certain, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we were all legal. For that, with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Howell. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. It sounds like we've hit a point that we need to have a motion for a bathroom break in a minute, but, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we would defer any further action on this proposal today, bring it back next week on the 14th of August for a continued discussion by commissioners and potential action by commissioners on the 14th.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
And to be clear, we always defer to commissioners if they ask to defer something, so, aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Okay, this is deferred. We'll take this action up again next Wednesday, the 14th. And there was a motion for a bathroom break, huh? It's not official, but I'll second the motion. There's going to be a lot of shuffling here in the auditorium. We're going to take about a five-to-seven-minute break, come back. to take about a five to seven minute break. Come back. Okay. Back we are. Like to make note that Commissioner Howell is now joining. He has a commitment this afternoon that he could not dodge, so he's now joining us on Zoom until about 1:15. So I'm going to try to push us through the rest of this meeting so that we can be done it before nightfall. I'd like to make a motion. We had a lot of public comment during the public hearing, so I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, donation of Coliseum Booster Pump Station with an estimated fair value of $47,380 to the city of Park City, Kansas.
Hello, Andrew.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Elts, Facilities Director, here to present on the Coliseum Booster Pump Station addition transfer. The Kansas Coliseum, also known today as WSU Zniar, was built in 1977 outside the city limits of Park City, and even though the city of Park City does provide water and sewer services to the Coliseum, in 1989, an agreement was made between the city of Park City and Central County that allowed the county to design and construct water and sewer utilities using the city of Park City's infrastructure and route it to the vacant land south of the Coliseum or the northwest corner of 77th Street North and Hydraulic. Construction on the land was set to begin for a paramutual facility, or as we know it today, the Wichita Greyhound Park or the Golden Circle, and having the utilities on site were vital to keep construction on schedule. In order to provide adequate water supply to the site, a pump station was constructed on county property, on county-owned property along Hydraulic Street between 61st Street North and 69th Street North. The agreement continues to identify that after construction of the utilities by the county, the city of Park City would maintain the utility infrastructure. I need to make a correction here. The city of Park City actually didn't inquire on owning this parcel. What I discovered last night was that the city of Park City was looking to annex this parcel, and then conversations occurred on whether or not the county should retain ownership of this or just look at most or a fire station, both of which are not far from the area with an EMS post on 53rd Street and a fire station on 77th. The city of Park City has maintained the parcel and everything on it, and because we cannot find a use for it, we propose deeding the property over to the city of Park City. Here is an aerial map of the general location. This is a zoomed-in aerial map and a GIS, a picture of GIS showing the right-of-way and easement restrictions. I will stand for any questions, and I recommend authorizing the chairman to sign the quitclaim deed.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Commissioners have been briefed on this and have real use for this land for the county purpose anyhow, so we appreciate that. This is in District Four. I'd happy to, if there's any questions or comments for Andrew, seeing none, happy to make a motion to take the recommended action, which is all stated in the agenda, backup materials, and incorporated into my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on August 1st, 2024.
And there he is, very patient, Joe Thomas.
Yes, sir. I've been very patient. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. And this is the Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting of August 1st, which has five items that we're seeking your approval. First item is laboratory and safety supplies, various departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the state of Kansas contract 55510 with Fisher Scientific Company LLC, and that goes through the date of December 31st, 2028. Item number two, Agilent Technologies, and this is for their gas chromatograph and mass spectrometry system for Regional Forensic Science Center. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Agilent Technologies in the amount of $125,221. Item three is eight large or midsize intermediate four-door sedans for fleet management and sheriff's office, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet in the amount of $187,600. Item number four, three current model Voyager or caravan minivans for fleet management, sheriff's office, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Parks Motors in the amount of $128,253. And our final item, item five, is two police package, all-wheel-drive Durango pursuit vehicles, fleet management, sheriff's office, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Davis Moore Automotive in the amount of $80,694. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, and I recommend approval.
Very good. Okay. Any questions for Joe? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts for August 1st, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoles.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items I through Y, with the exception of Q, which we'll pull to discuss.
Okay. Commissioners, consent agenda, items I through Y, with the exception of item Q, I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Tom, item Q.
Tanya or Lindsay, I don't care who wants to talk on item Q. I think Lindsay, or Tanya, you want to go through the lease real quick?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. This item is a Second Amendment to an office lease, and this lease is for the nine offices that we occupy in the Ruffin Building. So this lease was set to expire on June 30th of 2025, and so this lease will basically extend us through June 30th of 2028. And so we basically extended this lease another three years and also negotiated the term, or excuse me, the fee for our lease. So we reduced that down to $17 a square foot for that lease. It was originally in our original lease, it was going to be $18 a square foot, but we moved that back down to $17 a square foot. And then additionally, for this lease, we have an early termination that after June 30th of 2027, we are able to get out of the lease with 90 days written notice. I know one of the questions was, you know, why this lease, what we're doing for, you know, being in this particular lease, and I just would say that we continue to look for an administration building. We continue to talk about that. And then I don't know, Commissioners, if you want to speak any further on that, but I have been presenting on what our options are for an admin building.
Okay. Item Q, lease agreement for the Ruffin Building. Any discussion? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I hate that we're at this place. I really do. The reason we're here is because we've gone down every rabbit hole we could think of to not take any action on this since 2018. If the BOCC had made a decision back in 2018, the estimated cost for demolition and construction of a new building next to the courthouse in 2018 was 24 million with an estimated interest rate of 2%. We won't get 2% today. At that time, bond and insurance back then, we would have expected to pay about 29.4 million over 20 years. Based only on the publicly discussed option in 2024, the most recent estimated cost for construction of a new building at Third and Main as of April of 2024 was 33.7 million. We only plan to bond-fend 28 million of that project now with an estimated interest rate of about 3.4. At the time, we expect to issue the bonds in early October of 2024. We would expect to pay $38.3 million in debt services over 20 years, plus an additional 5.7 million in cash for construction alone, for a total of $44 million over 20 years. We have incurred other costs because of the delay. We paid an extra $159,000 between 2019 and 2024 on various architectural design due diligence costs that we otherwise would not have incurred. In addition, the Ruffin remodel, the rent, moving costs to date, $1.9 million. This doesn't include any estimated cost for staff time that was involved. Based on what I've just told you, we'll pay an extra $16.8 million over 20 years based on the delay because we couldn't make a decision since 2018. And remember, these figures are all based on normal inflation, which normal inflation during that time was 22.3% since 2018. But the same group that gave me some of this analysis, all figures also that specializes in office building construction, that index has increased by 52.3% since 2018. So the bottom line is that we keep spending money and doing nothing, and it's costing the taxpayers millions of dollars. Now, I hate to say that we're going to go in and extend this lease, but we have to because we don't have any place else to go. But it's because this commission couldn't come up with three votes to do the right thing since 2018. I certainly hope that this commission can look at the figures and what it's cost us since 2018 and what it'll cost us if we continue to delay, what it's going to cost the property taxpayers in the future because we have to have a building. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions or comments on item Q?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead. Commissioner Howell.
I'd like to respond to the previous comments, and that is, every commissioner has one vote, and there have been much less expensive options that we have turned down for a variety of reasons, whether it be a location. One of the options was, and I can say this out loud because we got pretty far down the path, the Riverview Building had some occupancy that we had to deal with over there, but we would have been in that building years ago had we taken that option, and it would have been essentially half the cost of building a new building today. We had a building out east we looked at that would have been, the purchase price was much less than $10 million, and to get the building configured for our needs would have been a few million dollars perhaps. It was a much less expensive option. But again, there's always, again, as a previous commissioner spoke, it takes three votes. And again, the reason I have not voted for, this probably the same thing he would probably be support, is because that was always consistently the most expensive option, and I've always looked for the least expensive option. So there's been building after building after building that I have been willing to support, but we can never get the three votes, and that's why we're at the junction we are at today. I appreciate his perspective, but I believe that the reason we have not been able to find three votes is because he's advocated for a more expensive option than I have. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I'll just simply say that I've been here since 2023, and I'm determined that we're going to get an admin building done as quickly as possible because there are some costs being incurred. So this is a conversation that has gone on for the better part of a decade, and we need to get some resolution to move it forward. And from my seat, I'm determined to help do that. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, and I appreciate, totally respect Commissioner Dennis's comments, and same with you, Commissioner Howell. All of us, or three of us weren't here in 2018, and in a way, I wish maybe you'd have made a decision in 2018. But this commission has to look at what's happening today and the impact on our residents today. And so any, I do enjoy that we've had discussions a little bit openly about efforts to continue to have some combined services with our friends at the city of Wichita. We don't really know what that final look is going to be and how much square foot we'll need to still operate in what we do versus potential merge. foot we'll need to still operate in what we do versus potential merged services. I think it's fairly responsible that we continue, and whatever square feet we need, being purchasing a building or building a new one is pretty responsible. If, and for the, for the community, if we spend 30 million on a new building, the interest alone would be, for the first years, would be approaching two and a half, $3 million, something like that?
That would be the first thing.
The bond, so the bond payment, the interest on the bond payment could be two and a half, $3 million-ish versus we're renewing a lease while we work through this at 870,000, which at $17 a foot. Thank you for decreasing that from 18, and I think Class A office space now is going upwards of 20 a foot. And so I know it's not the most ideal solution, but it does buy us the, even if we build, it's going to take a few years to get that done. And so you were going to say the bond payment?
If I may interject first, just to let everyone know that we're one minute from 1:00 PM, and KPTS expires at 1:00 PM for the daily coverage of this meeting, so you can pick us back up at YouTube or Facebook. So, sorry, Commissioner.
Anyway, okay. So, just?
Yes, to confirm, you are correct. The, the total bond and interest payment would be around two to two and a half million per year that we would expect to pay over a 20-year period averaged out.
Right.
And unfortunately, the volatility in the market right now actually might help us with that otherwise projected interest rate, so.
Yep. So anyway, regardless, I mean, not regardless, but thank you for allowing us all to weigh in. And a difficult decision, so, but this one is an extension that I will support.
Quickly, what do we occupy here? One floor? Two floors?
Two floors, nine offices, and I think it's a little bit over 50,000 square feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Appreciate it. I'll make a motion to, I'll talk to Sarah Lopez. Commissioner Lopez?
Appreciate it. Thank you. I just want to point out that as we're having the discussions on new builds or purchasing a building that's already there, it's not as simple as just what's the value of the building today or what are we spending today, but what is that over the next 50 years, and what are we leaving our children and grandchildren to pay for us too? So it's not as simple as some might imagine, but it really is, we want to make sure we do this right going forward, and I agree, I wish this would have been done in 2019. Actually, when I talked to Tim Norton before I decided to run, he told me about his adventure of trying to get one done well before that. So I think this conversation has actually been going on for quite some time, well past 20, or before 2018, but it is very complex, and we want to make sure that we're not setting our, our kids or our grandkids up to have to figure out what the next step is in having to move again. We want to just make sure we get it right this time. So just adding that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. I'll move to approve item Q of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Sorry, proceed, Chairman. I'll make a comment in a second. I just grabbed my mic.
Was that an I or a N?
At the risk of interrupting the Chair's roll call, I was going to ask if, if perhaps the motion could approve the amendment and authorize the Chairman to sign, just so it's clear on that.
I will, thank you, Justin. I will make a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the office lease agreement for the Russen Building downtown and approve signatures.
Second.
Now you can call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you very much. We're going to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One, Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Online present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Seeing no one to sign up for public agenda, next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A, fire meeting minutes of July 10th, 2024.
Commissioners, if it, all Commissioners were present at both of these dates, unless there's objection, I'll just combine the two into one motion. I move to approve the fire meeting minutes of July 10th and July 17th, 2024.
Second.
A motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Budget discussion.
Any budget discussion for Fire District? Seeing none. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other? Next item.
Executive session.
There is no executive session for the Fire District, so I'll adjourn the Fire District meeting and return us back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Budget discussion.
Anything under budget discussion?
Chairman, if I could, there's several items under budget discussion, but due to the length of the meeting today and the fact that we have executive session yet, we could defer all of this discussion either to staff next Tuesday or the meeting next Wednesday, totally up to the Commission.
Okay. I believe that Commissioner Howell is still on. He had told me before he left that he's willing to defer to staff or to next week as well. Commissioner Howell, is that confirmed?
Yes, sir. Chairman, I have probably around maybe 10 to 12 items to discuss, so it's going to be lengthy, probably at least an hour or maybe longer. I'm willing to do that in the staff meeting or next Wednesday, your choice.
Okay. We're appreciative of that. Anybody else under budget discussion today? Okay. Seeing none. Appreciate that. Nothing under budget discussion today. Next item.
Committee reports.
Anybody have something for committee reports? Okay. Seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Seeing nothing. Next item.
Executive session.
We do have an executive session today. Commissioner Lopez?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 1:35 for preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 1:35.
Okay. I second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. We'll return shortly. Executive session.
Okay, we are back from executive session. There was no formal action taken. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission? Seeing none, it's with great honor that I say we are adjourned.